Adrian Anne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, October 21st, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for October 21st, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and live stream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumbow.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we have a slight change in the order of our agenda items. We are going to begin tonight with action item number one, which is photo for National League of Cities Centennial.
All right, I'll need a motion on this first, please, and then we'll discuss it.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and take the photo.
Second by Farber.
I've got a motion by Rousell and a second by Farber. Adrian, please don't let me forget to vote on that later. So, everyone, we are helping the National League of Cities tonight. So, the National League of Cities is a national organization representing cities and towns and villages across the United States. They're celebrating 100-year anniversary this year, and they've actually made us one of their digital stops on this tour. So, we get to talk about Dubuque, brag about Dubuque, talk about the cool things that are going on here and some specific projects that we're working on, and they're going to highlight that for the whole country to see. So, part of that fun is they've asked us to take a group photo. So, what we're going to do now is Felicia, over here to everyone's right, is going to be coordinating a photo for us. I would invite anybody here who is interested in being a part of the photo to come on up. Staff is kind of obligated, more or less, so come on up. You knew about this already, so you knew that this was going to happen. So, I invite everybody to come up, and I mean it. Anybody from the public who would like to be a part of this, come on up and jump in the picture. We'd love to have you.
We're just going to be...
We're going to listen to Felicia now. She's going to...
Okay, she's going to tell us.
And as mayor, I'm turning my authority over to Felicia for a moment.
Oh, here, shall we move it out of the way?
Sure.
I'm guessing we're going to need to...
Yes. Oh, sure.
We actually did it.
Yeah, we picked a good meeting to do this photo.
Okay, come on over.
All right.
I feel like everyone else is getting down, so I should probably get down too, but the council will be up there.
All right, Felicia's got her spotter.
Mike, I can barely see you.
We're close.
And kind of, if you guys can get all the...
It's recording.
And kind of the... If I can see, you can see, I can see. So, like, just tippy toes sometimes. All right, so big smiles. All right, one, two, three. And maybe a third. So, sorry. One, two, three, take it around. And then can we even do one where we're cheering?
Woo!
Woo!
Is this a woo?
No.
Too woo or not too woo?
All right, here we're going to cheer. And we're going to shake the signs. Like that, yep. All right, ready? One, two, three.
Woo!
That was bad.
Woo!
Two, three.
Woo!
Excellent.
All right.
Okay, so I'm going to scooch down there.
Well, actually, you're going to need to vote first. You've got to vote first.
Never mind.
I'm not going in.
Well, everyone, thank you so much for being a part of that. I'm really glad so many people were here to do that. That was actually really exciting to have that opportunity. You know, Dubuque has been pretty active with the National League of Cities, with the Iowa League of Cities. There are several of us sitting up here that are pretty active, and the city as well, city employees. It's not just about going to conferences and learning things. This is how the partnerships get formed, to be able to do the big things that we do in Dubuque. So, celebrating together like that, I think, is really important. So, thank you for being a part of it. Really appreciate having you here. Now, we're going to do the boring part and vote on the fact that we had to take that picture, so just give us a second to do that, and we'll get to the presentations that everybody's here for. So, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passed at 7-0.
Thank you, Adrian.
We'll move back to our regular order for the meeting with presentations. Our first presentation is the City-County Communications and Marketing Association 2024 Savvy Awards Recognition.
Lots of props tonight. Good evening, I'm Randy Gale, Public Information Officer for the City of Dubuque. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff colleagues. City-County Communications and Marketing Association, also known as 3CMA, is the nation's largest network of local government communicators. The organization was founded in 1988 on the philosophy that communications and marketing are essential to helping governments engage and build stronger relationships with their residents. 3CMA's Savvy Awards have represented the best in government communications for more than 30 years. The 2024 awards were presented at 3CMA's annual convention in Arlington, Texas, in early September, and included projects produced since January 1, 2023, from hundreds of city and county communications professionals across the United States. To my knowledge, the City of Dubuque has never won a Savvy Award. This year, Dubuque was honored with not one, but two Savvy Awards: one in the interview, talk show, news programming category, and one in the communications and/or marketing plans category. The winning entry in the interview, talk show, news programming category among municipalities with a population of 60,000 or less was the City Services Edition of the Delivering Dubuque with Mayor Kavanaugh video series, which was produced in July of 2023. The video is hosted by Mayor Brad Kavanaugh and written and produced by multimedia specialist Felicia Carner, with production assistance from video producer Eric Muller, and featured employees and services from all city departments. In their comments about the video, 3CMA's judges noted the "focus on building trust through a conversational tone and showcasing the human side of local government officials and employees," and called the entire Delivering Dubuque series "transparent, engaging, and educational." Competing against municipalities with populations of 75,000 or fewer in the communications and/or marketing plans category, Dubuque's winning entry was the campaign to promote seasonal employee recruitment in the Leisure Services Department for the summer of 2023 and beyond. Among the results of the campaign was adequate staffing for the reopening of both of Dubuque's pools in 2023. Judges described the seasonal recruitment campaign as "incredible" and commended the department for the "well-thought-out and executed goals and objectives," as well as the "extensive tactics and diverse media used to broaden reach and accomplish the campaign outcome." The campaign was truly a team effort with involvement of all PIO staff at the time in 2023, including communication specialist Kristen Hill, multimedia specialist Felicia Carner, and video producer Eric Muller. Congratulations and thank you to Mayor Kavanaugh for his suggestion to start the Delivering Dubuque video series and his willingness to commit... Sorry. His willingness to commit time and energy to it. Congratulations and thank you to the entire PIO team for this acknowledgement of the quality of their work, and I also want to thank Felicia Carner for her work on the actual nominations themselves, getting those submitted on time. So, finally, thank you to all of you for your support of our efforts in communications and marketing.
Well, Randy and the PIO team, congratulations. public information office in this city. This is something that not every city has, and it's absolutely incredible. And a huge reason is the dedication that we get from the small but mighty staff that is in that organization, in that department. Felicia, you in particular, I know that you like to pretend that it's... Not pretend. I know you like to give the credit to a lot of other people, and it does belong to everyone in many ways, but Felicia, you're incredible at the work that you do, and you absolutely deserve this award in particular. I think it's really incredible that the City of Dubuque has never won one of these, and because of the tireless work and effort that you do to make people like me and any one of us actually look kind of good at stuff is absolutely just amazing. So, thank you very much for the work that you do. Randy, the leadership that you provide, along with Eric and Kristen and your staff, it's unmatched, and I don't know if people get to see how much work that you put into it as we have to tell the message and the story of what this city is and does. So, thank you so much and congratulations again.
Our second presentation is 2024 University of Dubuque Alumni Award Recognition.
Our next award is the Volunteer Recognition Award, which is given this year to Jeremy Jensen.
Jeremy Jensen, Volunteer Recognition Award. Jeremy Jensen attended the University of Dubuque as a non-traditional student through the Life Program. Graduating with a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice in 2015 and a Master's Degree in Communication in 2018, he is also a 2016 graduate of the FBI National Academy. He joined the Dubuque Police Department in March 1994, where he worked in various roles including patrol, traffic, criminal investigations, and community policing. In December 2017, he was promoted to Assistant Chief and became interim chief in 2021. In March 2022, he was unanimously appointed as Police Chief by the Dubuque City Council. As chief, Jeremy is actively involved in community initiatives, notably emotional intelligence training for police officers. In 2024, he co-led a workshop at the University of Dubuque focusing on self-awareness and relationship management. Through the Six Seconds Emotional Intelligence Network at UD, he earned certifications as EQ Practitioner, Assessor, and Coach, which are aimed to equip officers with skills to manage high-tension situations. Jeremy collaborates closely with UD on campus safety, providing training on brain health initiatives and emergency response. He leads tabletop exercises for various emergency situations and is the liaison for all brain health needs, coordinating with the Dubuque Police Department, UD CARES Team, and UD Students. Jeremy also supports UD on compliance with different federal laws. Outside of law enforcement, Jeremy serves as a volunteer coach for the UD Wrestling Program and is a guest speaker for classes throughout the academic year. Jeremy and his wife Jennifer have been married for 28 years and have two daughters, Jenna and Janice. They reside in Dubuque, where Jeremy remains an active leader in both the police department and the community. Congratulations, Jeremy, this year's Volunteer Recognition Award recipient.
As the president of the University of Dubuque, Jeremy represents the best that I think we have to offer in terms of wanting our graduates to go out and be community servants. And he ended up getting a profession where he embodies that every day. But to see someone be so invested not only professionally in community service, but also outside of his profession, is a remarkable testimony to his character and who he is, and we can't be prouder at the University of Dubuque to have Jeremy as one of our alums.
Twice.
And so, we are so proud to be able to share a resource like Jeremy, both with the city and also the university. So, congratulations, Jeremy.
Thank you. Chief, congratulations. Thank you very much for sharing that with us, for everybody at the University of Dubuque. We really appreciate that. And yes, we do feel we get the benefit as a community every day, and especially as a city, of having a chief as strong as Chief Jensen. So, Jeremy, congratulations.
Our third presentation is Public Safety Citizen Life Saving Award Recognition.
Great energy, right? Let's keep it going. I'm honored to stand before you and recognize an event that happened on September 5th. But before I do, I want to correct an error that I made last time at our first Public Safety Award. I didn't give any background on it. So, first, I want to introduce Police Chief Jeremy Jensen, who was just introduced, and then our dispatch manager Jessica George, also EMS supervisor Sam Janiky. So, this all started from a conversation that we had. Sometimes we go out to lunch and we just brainstorm things. We asked permission to showcase events that happened through the community where our citizens stepped up and saved a life. And sometimes just showcasing these brings awareness on what you can do as community members to save a life. So, in this particular instance, this is our second Public Safety Life Saving Award. And thank you to Sam for coordinating everything. His team recognizes when these happen and they bring it to our attention. And thank you to the city manager for providing approval to acknowledge these. We're honored to present you with a remarkable example of how early recognition and swift decisive action by bystanders can make a critical difference in saving a life within our community. On September 5th, Units 502, which is our fire engine, and Medic 552 were dispatched to Sam's club in response to a choking emergency. While en route, our crews were informed that CPR was being initiated by a citizen. Thankfully, the patient, who had lost a pulse and was not breathing, regained consciousness and was communicating with bystanders by the time we got there. The patient had been offered a free sample of food, which caused her to choke. Bystanders quickly recognized the severity of the situation and attempted to dislodge the obstruction using the Heimlich maneuver. Despite multiple attempts, they were unsuccessful, and the patient lost consciousness and became pulseless. She was gently lowered to the ground by those present. What made a difference in this situation was the immediate response of bystanders. A local emergency room physician, who's requested to remain anonymous, and his wife were present and quickly intervened. They recognized the signs of cardiac arrest and initiated CPR without hesitation. For approximately three minutes, they performed chest compressions and mouth-to-mouth resuscitation until the obstruction was cleared, allowing the patient to regain consciousness and begin breathing on her own. This incident underscores the importance of early bystander recognition and action. Had these individuals not acted so quickly, the outcome could have been very different. The timely intervention by the physician and his wife and those around them brought the precious moments needed... or bought the precious moments needed that our emergency crews needed to arrive and provide further stabilization. Because of this coordinated effort, the patient's life was saved, and after receiving medical care, she was discharged from the hospital in good health. I want to emphasize that this incident is a powerful reminder of the critical role that bystanders play in emergencies. Immediate recognition, taking action, being brave enough to do something really provides those moments that we can come in and then apply advanced life support. As we were taking the picture earlier, I met, actually, Ms. Miller, who was here, and her friend, who was at the Sam's facility. She actually just advised me that she also intervened and provided life-saving efforts. So, thank you. Sincere apologies, I don't have the award with you, but we will create one and make sure we present that to you as well. I don't know if you wanted to stand up in recognition of a life saved, but this is a proud moment for the fire department, for the police department, for dispatch, for EMS, and we're so thankful to have her here, Ms. Miller, today. So, thank you. Mayor, we'll make sure that that citizen receives this award. Sometimes we like to invite him to the fire station, close the loop on conversations on what happened, and to thank them in person. So, thank you again for the opportunity.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Chief, and thank you for everybody. First of all, for making this award possible. I think that's really important that you're doing that and telling us the backstory there. So, thank you. And we're so glad to have you. Thank you very much for joining us tonight, and thank you to the anonymous but very important heroes in this situation who did intervene, and also the non-anonymous heroes in this situation. So, thank you very much for the work that you do. Let this be a lesson to all of us on what that quick action really means and what it means to be able to save another member of our community. So, thank you very much to everyone involved. All right, I think our final presentation, Adrian.
Our final presentation is Grand River Center Award and Certification Recognition.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Marie Ware, and I'm the Leisure Services Director, serving you. And with me tonight, I have the OVG staff, and I'll let Ryan introduce all the staff we have with us tonight. We are so excited to be able to bring forward several recognitions that the Grand River Center has received recently. It's always exciting, not only for the things that you talk about within our city and the awards that we get for the work we do, but we also have these partners in our management companies and other partnerships that it's really extremely important to be able to share that good news. And so, one of the first things was is that Culture City, which is a nonprofit organization and is dedicated to inclusivity and accessibility for individuals with sensory needs. And many of us know individuals that fall into that category and how important that is. And so, that initiative aims to create these welcoming environments for the individuals that have those sensitivities when they come to different facilities. And so, this allowed... This certification allowed the staff to be able to receive training, to be able to have the kinds of tools to be able to offer, so that when people come to the Grand River Center that do have those sensory needs, that they have options and opportunities. And this is so important because it not only does that, but it also meets those council goals of we want to be an equitable community of choice, and we really are focusing on those equity goals of all persons, and that's meeting the needs of them. Secondly, then, they also had the good news of receiving the North Star Stella Award. And this is something for not only them to be proud of, but us to be proud of as well, because this is an award that is given, and we received the best convention center in the Midwest. Now, how did we do that? There was nominations, 1,000 of them, and you figure there's only one Midwest, and 8,000 votes. And that means that their peers looked at that and said, hey, we can see by your nomination that overall excellence that you're providing, superior food, beverage offerings, professionalism of the staff, which I can attest to, sustainability initiatives, which we've heard of some of those throughout the last year that they've been initiating. Excuse me.
Hope you hit play.
Oh. Hey, I'd want to watch Jeremy again. And other critical aspects of convention centers, which are meeting and events. And so, they've been recognized by their peers, and so I'll let Ryan just share just a little bit more and as well as introduce the staff who make that happen.
Good evening. Ryan Bonifus, General Manager of the Grand River Center. I'm here tonight with our Director of Finance, Rick Stedger, and Kyla Lindsay, our Sales and Events Manager, and Ms. Sheri Sherman, our Office Manager. We're proud to be here today and representing Dubuque the best way we can. We're very excited about the award, and I know that's something that the travel Dubuque is working towards, and all of their pitches going out and trying to bring more guests and people into our wonderful city. And then additionally, with the Culture City Certification, certainly something that is important to all of us, and welcoming anyone into our venue and taking care of them the best we can.
Well, Ryan and team, congratulations. Best in the Midwest. I mean, that is no small feat. That's huge. Thank you very much for the work that you're doing, and I think the Culture City Certification speaks to that. You care deeply about the people that are going to be coming to visit you and to have important events in their life taking place at the Grand River Center. So, we just couldn't be happier with the work that we've seen from you and the things that are going on there. Excited for the future. I know we're doing our part here to try to make that an even better future by bringing even more people to town. So, thank you very much and congratulations. Thank you all. This is fun, Adrian. Let's keep going.
We'll move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is Veterans of Foreign Wars 125th Birthday.
I believe... Sorry. My glasses on this one. We have Post 508 Commander Wayne Brown here to join us today. So, Commander, if you wouldn't mind, you can come on up and say a few words, if you like, and I'll read the proclamation.
Well, thanks for having me. Our Post 508 is the oldest post in Iowa of the VFW. It was started in 125 years ago, and I'm hoping that we can keep it going. It's a great post. We want to keep it going by getting young members that are eligible for us and keep it going for another 125 years, although I probably won't be the commander anymore. But no, it's quite an honor to be recognized for this, and it's, you know, it's great. It's a great post. Dubuque is really great with all the veteran programs that are available, and it's just... I'm just proud to be part of it.
Well, it's an honor for us to have you here. So, thank you very much for joining us. We sincerely appreciate it and all the work that you do on an annual basis, you and everyone at the post. Thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States of America is celebrating a fantastic milestone, the 125th birthday of the most excellent service organization in the world; and whereas the VFW believes in protecting and fighting for those brave enough to fight for us, the residents of the United States; and whereas the VFW came into existence to address the issues plaguing our country's returning veterans from the Spanish-American War on the evening of the 29th of September, 1899; and whereas the Dubuque Veterans of Foreign Wars Leo A. Schwinn Gerald F. Winter Post 508 was established on October 2nd, 1920, becoming Iowa's first and oldest existing VFW post; and whereas the founders were willing to make a difference by making things right for those who deserved it most; and whereas the VFW was held to its founding principles and remained unwavering in its advocacy efforts for veterans, service members, and their families for 125 years. Now, therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby recognize the Veterans of Foreign Wars on its 125th birthday for the invaluable indifference in the lives of generations of veterans, service members, and their families. You can come on up. Let's give them a hand.[1791.97] Let's give them a hand.
Our second proclamation is National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week.
All right, our very own Mary Rose Corrigan, I believe, is here to accept. Oh, maybe not. We have another, other members of the team here to accept this proclamation.
Hi, I'm Christina Schneider. I'm the Lead and Healthy Homes Grants Program Manager, and with me tonight is Kelly Davis. She is our Lead and Healthy Homes Inspector. The lead poisoning has been greatly reduced in the City of Dubuque since the first project in 1998. Since then, 1,482 homes have been made lead safe. Recently, we have been awarded another grant, and we are excited to be able to make more lead-safe homes in the next three years. Thank you.
Excellent news. Thank you, Christina and Kelly, for being here to accept this proclamation, and thanks for all the work that you do on a regular basis. It's not easy to chase this funding, to be able to do this and make this happen, or to make all the work actually possible, so thank you very much for everything you do. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas lead exposure to children can result from multiple sources and can cause irreversible and lifelong health effects, and whereas lead is especially dangerous to children under the age of six because of their critical growth and development during the early years, and whereas almost 5% of the children tested in the City of Dubuque in 2024 were above the CDC level of concern, and whereas lead poisoning is preventable, the key is to keep children from coming into contact with lead sources, particularly lead paint and lead in water service lines, and whereas the City of Dubuque offers funding, education, and information to remove lead-based paint hazards and replace lead service lines to make Dubuque's homes lead-safe for our children, and whereas the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services recommends children be tested early and often through their healthcare provider or the Dubuque Visiting Nurses Association. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, Staff and Residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 20th through 26th of October, 2024, as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and advise the community to observe this week with appropriate programs and activities designed to enhance public awareness of lead poisoning prevention and the ways we can protect our families from lead poisoning.
Our third proclamation is Lights On After School Week.
Well, this one's easy. Beth McGory.
Good evening, I'm Beth McGory from St. Mark Youth and Richmond. I love coming to awards night. Like, I think this is like the second or third time I've ever been to awards night, and what it tells me is that this community loves what we get to do every day. We are in our professions and in our pieces, and we love the work that we do. We love our community. And at St. Mark, we get to hang out with all your kids after school, give them a safe place so that we can make sure that their insides feel as good as they need to feel every day. Today, I witnessed some kiddos who weren't having their best day, and that comes from lots of things. It comes from environments that they're living in, it comes from the environment that we all live in, it comes from having to hold it all together for eight hours at school all day long. I know you and I can't do that, so we go take a walk, we get a glass of water, we have a cup of coffee, we talk with our best friend. And what we're doing after school is making sure our kids know how to do that every day. We're not the only ones in town doing this gig, and this community has so many opportunities and so many ways to support us all in taking care of all of our kids after school. So, thank you always for your continued support, and we look forward to more support in the future.
Well, Beth, thank you as always for being here. We always are so happy to see you, and we know it's going to be some good stories that you share with us, but also some really important things that you're doing, the work that you do in after-school programming and you and everyone else that's involved in it. So, thank you so much for doing it and for being here to accept this proclamation again this year. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas after-school programs provide critical support for the academic growth and well-being of youth and offer new experiences and opportunities that help young people learn and grow, after-school programs provide innovative, hands-on opportunities for youth to engage in learning and connect with caring adults and peers in a safe and supportive environment. These supports are all and the more important today. And whereas St. Mark Youth and Richmond has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults, and whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year, the week of October 21st, 2024, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities, and whereas nearly 25 million families report that they would enroll their child in an after-school program if one were available. For every child in a program, four are waiting to get in, and whereas many after-school programs across the country are facing operating challenges so severe that they must consider closing their doors or turning off their lights, and whereas the City of Dubuque is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that help our children learn and grow while helping them develop the skills essential for success in life and work. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, Staff and Residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of October 21st, 2024, as Lights On After School Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and enthusiastically endorse Lights On After School and commit our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
Our fourth proclamation is Dubuque Climate Action Day.
All right, Malia Stakkis, I believe, is here to join us today.
Hello, I am Malia Stakkis, a Green Iowa AmeriCorps member, serving at our Sustainable Dubuque office. Today, I'm representing my team, but I am also here representing youth of Dubuque that do care about our city's future. I particularly am excited about Dubuque Climate Action Day because it brings awareness to climate change, and it also reminds our community of our climate action plan. The Youth Climate Action Fund is just one way youth are taking initiative on our climate action goals, and I am excited for council to read our proclamation and excited as well to celebrate this day as early as this Thursday.
Great, well, thank you very much, Malia, for being here and the work that you do. We, you know, we have some great opportunities to be able to celebrate real climate action this time, but the Youth Climate Action Fund is one of those exciting ones, to be able to get young people involved, so thank you very much for celebrating this and bringing attention to it. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas 350.org is an international campaign advocating for a global climate treaty to reduce carbon dioxide levels below 350 parts per million, having successfully organized a Day of Climate Action on October 24th, 2009, across 5,000 locations worldwide, and whereas the City of Dubuque signed the U.S. Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement in 2006, committing to meet or exceed Kyoto Protocol targets, and whereas the City of Dubuque is challenged by the localized efforts of climate change, including heavier rains and increased risk of flash flooding, surface drought conditions, and extreme heat, and whereas Dubuque's dedication to combining climate change necessitates coordinated city operations and policies that promote sustainable development, economic prosperity, environmental integrity, and social equity, and whereas Dubuque is one of 100 cities globally participating in the Youth Climate Action Fund program, demonstrating a commitment to youth-led climate solutions and community engagement through micro grants and initiatives, and whereas Youth Climate Action Fund participants enrich the lives of their community members, demonstrate initiative, community-centered dedication, and commitment to climate action, helping to meet community greenhouse gas reduction goals by creating and executing a project that will engage and affect citizens, the environment, and their future endeavors, and whereas October 24th serves as a day to recognize the efforts of Youth Climate Action Fund participants and others in Dubuque dedicated to sustainability, inspiring further community involvement in climate action. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, Staff and Residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 24th of October, 2024, as Dubuque Day of Climate Action in the City of Dubuque, and urge our community to thank Youth Climate Action Fund participants and others engaged in sustainability-focused initiatives for their service to our community.
Our fifth proclamation is Trick or Treat Night.
And I hope you all recognize, I'm wearing my mayor costume for this one. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas cornstalks, pumpkins, and a golden moon will herald the cool weather of autumn and the entertaining holiday of Halloween, and whereas Halloween is a fun time of year when young and old become creative and emerge as ghosts, devils, witches, cartoon characters, superheroes, and more, and whereas all manner of delightful costumed individuals go from house to house on their annual journey for candy and treats, announcing their arrival with a hearty trick-or-treat. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, Staff and Residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim Thursday, October 31st, 2024, as Trick or Treat Night during the hours of 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge all motorists to be watchful of our youngsters making their annual rounds.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I wonder if my friend Ben Valentine would receive that on behalf of the youth of Dubuque. You want to receive a proclamation, Ben?
That's a great idea, Mr. Jones. Thank you so much for suggesting that. Come on up, Ben.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you, Ben, for being here to accept that proclamation.
Our final proclamation is Extra Mile Day.
All right, Brittany Hayes, I believe, is here. Brittany, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of City Council. My name is Brittany Hayes, and I am the Community Service and Outreach Coordinator in the Office of Community Impact, and I want to say thank you for this proclamation to recognize November 1st as Extra Mile Day in Dubuque. Extra Mile Day is an opportunity for us to recognize our organizations, businesses, and individuals that do more than is expected to make a positive impact in Dubuque. Extra Mile Day is also a chance for us to celebrate that every one of us has the ability to create positive change when we do go the extra mile. What does it mean to go the extra mile? It can mean volunteering with our community organizations and our community events, it can mean lending a helping hand to our friends and neighbors, and it can also be something as simple as having a positive attitude when we move through our community. We're really lucky in Dubuque because we have many organizations, businesses, and individual community members that go the extra mile and do big and small things to make a positive difference in Dubuque. We've heard a lot of examples of that tonight, and so I feel like it is very appropriate for me to be here tonight. I did pull some information from Volunteer DBQ, which is a website that is provided by a partnership between the City of Dubuque and United Way, and from November 1st of last year to today, we have had 1,705 responses to volunteer opportunities that were posted on that site. Additionally, our Dubuque Days of Caring event in April had over 1,000 individuals volunteering, which contributed 4,658 volunteer hours, and the Spartans Make a Difference Day event a couple weeks ago had over 500 volunteers registered on Volunteer DBQ, which contributed 1,812 volunteer hours. So, we know that this is a very small snapshot of volunteering and service in Dubuque, but it's an idea of how our community goes the extra mile all the time. So, thank you again for joining me and appreciating those that go the extra mile to create positive change in Dubuque.
Well, Brittany, you said it. I mean, that's very well said, and you nailed it, that you are the perfect closer for this evening of proclamations, so thank you very much for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas Dubuque, Iowa, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual residents collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and whereas Dubuque, Iowa, is a community which encourages its residents to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community, and whereas Dubuque, Iowa, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community, and whereas Dubuque, Iowa, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2024. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, Staff and Residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2024, as Extra Mile Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge everyone in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place.
At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. In consent items can be found on pages two through six of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for any separate discussion this evening? I see no one here. Do we have anyone virtually?
We do not.
Thank you very much.
No input.
Thank you very much. All right, back to the table then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
I would actually like to hold number four, please, for separate discussion.
All right. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number four.
Second. Got a motion by Resnick, second by Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wessel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Onto number four. I would need a motion, please, to put this on the table, and then we can give a second and discuss.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
We will receive and file and approve number four.
Second by Farber.
And just so you know, the suggested disposition is to adopt the resolutions that are, that are in the change of motion, to adopt the resolutions, okay? Ms. Farber.
Second is amended.
Okay. Got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. So, this is related to the Sustainable Dubuque Community Grant Award recommendation, and there are several different resolutions here, and this is actually coming to us as a recommendation from the resilient community advisory commission. I first want to say that I sincerely appreciate the work of the commission. I know this isn't easy to be able to look at the different resolutions that are here and different grants that are going out, but there is one grant on this list that I, while I think it's a laudable issue, and I think it's something that is important to the community, I don't think it fits within the Sustainable Dubuque Grant Award recommendations. And I wanted to bring that up to the council, and it's the third resolution that is listed there for awarding Sustainable Dubuque Grant to Clarity Clinic Pregnancy Center. In reading this, it is, as I said, I think it's an important goal. I think it's something that is definitely work that needs to be done within the community, but as far as being able to relate it to the Dubuque's Climate Action Plan, I just can't find the connection. And I am not saying anything, I want to make it really clear, I'm not saying anything about the work that's being done here or the need to do this. I'm saying it doesn't fit within the Climate Action Plan, which I know is one of the very specific metrics that's used to establish these awards. So, I would like to suggest that at this point, my suggestion would be that we thank the commission for their work and thank Clarity Clinic for the work that they do, but remove that resolution from this list and only adopt the other resolutions for the Sustainable Dubuque Community Grant Award at this time, and hand this back to the commission if they would prefer to award the rest of the grant money to another organization that better fits the, better fits the mission, or provide us with another recommendation of some sort based on the commission work that they do. So, Ms. Farber.
So, when you read the background, it indicates that they are scored to address at least one of the 12 sustainability principles, and it would be interesting to find out what that principle was for this clinic so we have a better understanding of the award that was given to that group by the council, the commission.
Thank you, Ms. Farber.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
In light of that, I'd modify my motion to defer the awarding of that specific grant and adoption of that specific resolution until we can get some additional information from the commission.
So, just to clarify, you're suggesting that you, what would be your specific motion, So just to clarify, you're suggesting that you, what would be your specific motion, then, Mr. Jones, that you'd want to?
My motion is that we ask the, my hope is that we ask the commission for some clarification on how this, how they found that this fit, and we may agree with their determination once they tell us that, but I agree with you right now, it's the odd puzzle piece that doesn't fit. It's to a different puzzle than this one. So my motion is that we defer, my motion is that we not adopt that resolution for that particular grant at this time.
Okay.
And otherwise, receive and file the information. Receive and file and not adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Sorry for the circular thinking together.
Just, just real quick, would you, are you suggesting we adopt the other resolutions? I'm asking, at this time?
Absolutely.
Okay. So adopt the other resolutions and defer the resolution related specifically to the Clarity Clinic.
We will receive and file the documents and adopt the resolutions with the exception of the award to the Clarity Clinic until such time as the commission revisits it.
Okay. Ms. Farber, you second it? Would you second that?
I was seconded as amended.
Okay. Karen, did we do that okay?
Yes, that works.
All right, thank you. So we have a new and amended motion here on the table. Other discussion or questions, council? Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
I would just like to thank you for what I would be in agreement with. I think there's a variety of wonderful options here that we have to support, and when we speak of the division of our Climate Action Plan and public health, I think there is somewhat of a misplacement of that specific item. So I'm in agreement, and I thank you for your leadership on it.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel. Any here? Yes, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I'm glad that we're doing this for more clarification, and I'm also glad that we're not saying that it shouldn't be eligible, that we're just waiting, and we're not taking that money and dispersing it to other groups. We're holding that money until we get some more information. When the Resilient Community Advisory Commission recommends it, I tend to go with the commission that has spent a lot of time, and we did get, you know, I can see everybody's point that it doesn't match as well as the others. But again, there's many things to like about the revised amendment, the revised motion. So do we need to say we're going to visit this in two weeks or a month, or if we just leave it open-ended? Is that what we, is that what you prefer?
My understanding of the motion is that it is open-ended and just handed back to the commission at this time. Was that accurate in your case, Mr. Jones?
I think if they, they may revisit it and say, oh, okay, and move on to other business, in which case it's a closed matter. Or they may say, well, here's, here's why, Mr. Mayor, we think that this is important. We think it does fit. We think it fits for these reasons, then I think we give it our careful consideration when that occurs, if that occurs.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Does that help, Mr. Resnick?
It does. I, you know, I, it's interesting how we're questioning their, not their motivations, but their judgment on something where they're specifically tasked to do. But I'd be looking forward to them coming forward and giving us some more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Any other discussion or questions on this one? All right, so the motion on the table, as amended, is to adopt the resolutions in number four related to the Sustainable Dubuque Community Grant Award Recommendation, with the exception of the resolution related to the Clarity Clinic Pregnancy Center, and asking the, the Resilient Community Advisory Commission to provide more information to us at a later date of their choosing.
True.
Okay. All right, so that's the motion. We have a motion from Jones, second by Farber. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to items set for public hearing. We have six. First is setting a public hearing petition to vacate the alley right of way in the block bounded by Findlay Street, Green Street, and Bunker Hill Road in Findley's addition in the city of Dubuque, Iowa for vacating petition agreement between City of Dubuque and Interstate Power and Light Company for November 4th, 2024. Second is Kerper Boulevard Lift Station Project, initiate public bidding process and setting date for a public hearing for November 4th, 2024. Fourth is Ruby Sutton Building Second Floor Renovation Project, initiate public bidding process and setting date for a public hearing for November 4th, 2024. Fifth is setting a public hearing to approve the revised administrative plan for the Housing Choice voucher program for November 4th, 2024. And sixth is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and Dubuque Housing LLC for November 4th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for November 4th.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell and a second by Wethel. Just for clarity on my case, they are all November 4th, right? I wasn't paying that close of attention, Ms. Russell. They are?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, wonderful. Yeah, okay, then the, we have a motion and a second. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have application review for the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority and the Equity and Human Rights Commission, and appointments for the Resilient Community Advisory Commission and the Zoning Advisory Commission.
All right, so first up, we have an applicant review. We have one, for the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority, we have one for your term that runs through July 16th, 2028. One applicant, William Hendricks. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application this evening? Seeing no one here. Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
No input.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the Equity and Human Rights Commission. We have one three-year term through January 1st, 2026, and we have two applicants, Luciana Bravo and Tracy Phillipson. Do we have anyone here to address us on either of these applications this evening? Seeing no one here, anything virtually?
No.
No input.
All right, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to the boards and commissions' appointments. We have appointments first, I'm sorry, you okay if I just move on to this? Thank you very much, Adrienne. We have the Resilient Community Advisory Commission. We have two applications here for three-year terms through July 1st, 2027. Since we have two applications and two applicants, I will entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that Nolan Balinski and Rachel Schmidt-Bocky be appointed to the two three-year terms through July 1st, 2027.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Nolan Balinski and Rachel Schmidt-Bocky are both appointed to two, to three-year terms, I'm sorry, through July 1st, 2027. Next is the Zoning Advisory Commission. We have one five-year term through July 1st, 2027. One applicant, Troy Freystad. I entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move that Troy Freystad be appointed to the Zoning Advisory Commission.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Troy Freystad is appointed to a five-year term through July 1st, 2027 to the Zoning Advisory Commission.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is request to rezone 1,000 Cedar Cross Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Need a second to get my words. Move to receive and file the documents. Come on. Move to receive and file the documents, and I further move that the crime of the proposed ordinance be considered in passing and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to the meeting, which is to be finally passed and be suspended.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Resnick. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Wally Wernemann, Planning Services Director. The request before you tonight is rezone a subject property from Commercial Service and Wholesale District to C3 General Commercial. This property is located at the intersection of Cedar Cross Road and Cedar Cross Court. The applicant has requested a rezon to allow the operation of a consignment clothing store whose use is designated as retail sales and service. The, the business is known as the Primrose Consignment Boutique. We held a rezoning request before the Zoning Advisory Commission on October 2nd, and at that meeting Samantha Wright spoke in favor of the request. She noted that she has a retail store, but recently found out that the property was not zoned appropriately, and that she's asking to remedy the situation. We received a complaint about a temporary sign on the property, so our zoning enforcement officer, along with one of our assistant planners, went out to inform the applicant that they may or may not be aware that their operation was not permitted in the current zone. So instead of just dropping a letter on them, we went out and had that conversation with them ahead of time. And during the public hearing, staff detailed what is the commercial zoning district is, all the different uses between C3 and commercial service. This entire corridor is like a corridor in transition. We have a lot of C3 zoning that's popping up along the area, especially with some of the additional residential uses and the use of the area is one of a major thoroughfares to our community. For example, Casey's Convenience Store, we actually have a Charlotte coffee house, coffee house being built out there, car wash, some other uses. We actually had some of these other commercial service districts be rezoned to C3 for retail sales and services as well. So the Zoning Advisory Commission held that public hearing. Staff provided all the information. There was some discussion about how many zoning enforcement officers we had in the city during the property. We do operate on a complete basis. We did realize that information was, and we stepped in to help work with the property owner to remedy the situation. The Zoning Advisory Commission recommend by a vote of 6 to 0 to approve the rezoning request, and a supermajority vote is needed for city council approval for the request. That's all I have unless you have any additional questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Wally. We are on a public hearing to consider a request from Samantha Wright to rezon property located at 1,000 Cedar Cross Road from CS Commercial Service and Wholesale Zoning District to C3 General Commercial Zoning District. The Zoning Advisory Commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item this evening? Yeah, please, come on up. Yeah, if you could come to the, come to the front and then just state your name and address and provide your comments. Thank you.
Hi, I am Samantha Wright requesting for their approval. It is a popular thoroughfare road, and I just really would love it to be approved.
All right. And Samantha, what's your address, just for the record?
1449 Miller Road in Dubuque.
All right. Thank you, Samantha, for your comments. Anyone else providing input this evening? All right, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I support the zoning change. And I was just, Mr. Wernemann, you know, we had talked about this general area of Cedar Cross Road. And this, this is kind of reminds me of a situation out there where there's a lot of different things going on. Do we try to unify zoning in any way? Do we try to say, I mean, with this change, I see that, you know, we've got certain zoning and then other zoning all around it. And do we just go at a request? Because that's where we're at with this, and because we got started later, or, you know, this is different than any part of the city that I see? Or maybe that's wrong?
So we're going through the Unified Development Code update right now, which gets involved with rezoning, land use, all those different things. And typically, comprehensive rezoning of the city, where we look at larger swaths of property that may be more appropriate to be zoned something a little bit different, typically is done during that process. We've done it in 1985, we've done it in 2009, and now we're actually going through that process right now. A lot of things we're seeing currently right now is, it could retail sales and service just be listed as a permitted use in the commercial service district and not have to constantly go through a rezoning process for that. So during that analysis of the Unified Development Code, we're going to look at the city as the whole, the current land use, the future land use, and any of the appropriate zoning districts that may or may be generated or created. We may look at a Unified Development Code that has additional types of zoning districts that we haven't had before. So as we handle these requests, yes, they come in kind of one at a time. We do see the transition of the area that changes. Typically, it's a request of the applicant. In this case, it was a zoning enforcement situation. But there are different uses allowed based on those two different types of zones, and a C3 does allow a lot more, quite a few more uses than what a commercial service does. There are a little bit different type of uses, as you can see in the information that we provided to you. But yeah, it's, it is something that's happening in that area.
Thank you, thank you very much. And again, I support this, and best of luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. I have a question for you, Wally. I also support the rezoning. I don't, I don't see a problem with this particular case. But my question is this, you know, we've, in recent history, we've had a couple of issues where things were sort of discovered. And I'm curious if, because I think in one of those discussions, it was, it was kind of laid out there that we don't really have any sort of a business licensure or anything like that in the city of Dubuque. And I remember a suggestion being made that potentially having something like that could help business owners to recognize what they need to be doing and what zoning is before they jump into the business that they're doing. Because, you know, and I don't know all the specifics of this case, but in a similar case, a person could start a business, think they're doing everything right, and then recognize after the fact that maybe, oh, I'm actually breaking the law or breaking something, the rules in some way. Do other cities have a type of, you know, like a permit that would allow, you know, not to create more red tape, but would allow a question and answer session and more of an ability to know what's going on before you jump into something?
Yes, some cities do business licensing. The city of Dubuque does not have that currently. We do have licensing for secondhand businesses. Well, Adrienne can answer that because she's the one that issues quite a few of the licenses for that. But currently, we do not have any licensing requirements in the city. That would, that would involve like an improvement package. It's going to be additional service that would require probably additional staff for that. But what that business license typically will do is when they come to apply for it, some cities will notify various departments. For instance, our office will be notified, are they even allowed as a permitted use at the location? at the location? The fire department might have a contact for who's the property owner, if there's a call for service, same thing with the police department. Some other various departments will get, maybe get some notification about that and who's the individual that would need to get notified. A lot of times we have these LLCs that sometime are associated with properties. And then there's just the registered agent, which may be an attorney or lawyer or something like that. So it really depends on how people want to use those business licenses. Now, case in point, people still have to come get a business license. So there's those situations where you may have that and some people may or may not be aware of that. We do have people that ask us all the time and we say, you know, we don't have any business license requirements. You'd have to check with the city clerk if you're required to have one for, I think it's one of three or four typically secondhand dealers and some other, other aspects for that, so.
That's helpful. You said something really important in the middle of what you were saying there. It's going to cost money to be able to do that. That part had, I had not recognized entirely, so I appreciate you saying that. That in order to do this and provide a new service, we would need to provide new staff to be able to administer that along with new systems put in place to do it. That's probably an important part of the discussion. And I don't want to jump us too far ahead. I don't want to have budget discussions yet. We wait on that and have lots of those earlier in the year, but I think it's an important thing to think about when we recognize, as we've said for the last couple of years, things are getting tighter and tighter based on several different factors. Some, from a budgetary standpoint, this could be a difficult lift. But the education piece, I know we're working on, and I think that could be helpful in a case like this, so we don't have somebody doing something that they didn't recognize they weren't supposed to be doing necessarily. And then after the fact, have to come and do this. It'd be much cleaner to be able to do it beforehand. In combination with the Unified Development Code changes, I appreciate that, that context as well.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, motion here is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Pass at seven zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
And with final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second. By Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
And pass at seven zero.
Public hearing number two is resolution adopting the proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan for the North Cascade Road housing urban renewal area, version 2024.1.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Got a motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the North Cascade Road housing urban renewal area, which would expand the area to include property relating to the construction of water infrastructure to serve the area, including the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project. The proposed plan will provide for the continued use of tools that encourage investment and development activities in the area and support revitalization within the area and the community at large. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the North Cascade Road housing urban development area, urban renewal area, which would expand the area to include property relating to the construction of the water infrastructure to serve the area, including the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here, anything virtually? Thank you, Adrian.
No virtual and no input.
No, okay, thank you, thank you both. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
And motion passed at seven zero.
Public hearing number three is proceedings to hold public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $27 million sewer revenue capital loan notes, state revolving loan fund program, Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase One.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief financial officer Jennifer Larson recommends city council approval of the suggested proceedings for the public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $27 million sewer revenue capital loan notes, state revolving loan fund program, the proceeds of which will be used to fund the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project. The Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project is the first of several improvements that are needed within the Catfish Creek Interceptor Sewer System to provide adequate capacity to serve existing development within the city and to allow for additional flow from future developments and the growth of the city. The Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project is being funded utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funding for the design portion of both Phases One and Two. The construction and construction engineering for Phase One and Two will be funded utilizing state revolving fund or SRF loan proceeds. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approval of the suggested proceedings for the public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $27 million in sewer revenue capital loan notes, state revolving loan fund program, the proceeds of which will be used to fund the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Force Main Project Projects. Do we have anyone here in the chambers to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here, anything virtually?
No.
No input.
Both. Back to the table then for any discussion. Just so it's noted, this is a project, these projects are things we've been talking about a lot in the last few years. It's been part of the improvement plan along with budgeting for the last few years. So this is one of the reasons that we're just kind of moving right through this at this stage, because we've known this is coming. All right. Motion here on the table is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passed at seven zero.
We'll move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening? I invite anyone to come to the podium. Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
We're good.
We're good on virtual input?
No input.
Thank you very much, Adrian. All right, then we can move on to action items, please, Adrian.
We already addressed action item number one at the beginning of the meetings. We'll move on to action item number two, which is submission of fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023 annual comprehensive financial report and results of the 2023 financial statement audit, including required communications.
Take a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and, and listen to the presentation.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Mike, turn it over to you. Yeah, please.
City manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief financial officer Jennifer Larson and finance manager Brian DeMoss are transmitting the fiscal year 2023 annual comprehensive financial report and results of the 2023 financial statement audit, including required communications. The city's independent auditors auditor issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Chief financial officer Jennifer Larson and finance manager Brian DeMoss will make a presentation. And then both of them and I are available in case you have any questions. And also a representative of the auditing firm, Forbes, partner Jessica Richter is on the line virtually to help answer any questions. I respectfully recommend you receive and file the fiscal year 2023 annual audit and finance manager Brian DeMoss will now make a presentation.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Good evening, mayor and city council. As Mike said, I'm Brian DeMoss, the finance manager, and I'm here to talk about the city of Dubuque's 2023 annual comprehensive financial report. For fiscal year 2023, as in each year, the audit is performed annually. This is required by municipal oversight law and governmental auditing standards. This is an examination of all city financial records and is conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. The report within the report is rendered by an independent auditor and how appropriate the financial statements depict its, the city's financial condition and the results of its operations. This, the independent auditor is performed by persons that are not affiliated with the city in any way to ensure their compliance, complete objectivity and professionalism.
Brian, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you pull the mic just a little bit closer so we can hear you? Thank you very much.
Sorry. Within that, there's four types of independent auditor opinions. The first is the unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. This means that the financial statements are presented fairly within, within the report and the results of operations of the governmental unit are consistent with prior years. A modified opinion is very similar to unmodified opinion, but there is an exception to generally accepted accounting principles, which is explained in the opinion. Then there could be an adverse opinion, which is a bad opinion, which mean, which states the financial statements do not fairly present the financial position and the results of operation, and the results of the governmental unit. This would also include reasons why. And finally, there could be a disclaimer of an opinion, which basically means there's not enough information for the auditor to make a opinion on. In addition to the financial statement audit, there's a compliance audit. So this is when the auditors perform the review operations in terms of compliance with various laws and grant requirements as well. Compliance audits have always been part of governmental audits as well. So when we look at an audit, there's several benefits that we, we obtain when the audit is complete. It provides a professional opinion of the financial condition of the governmental unit. The audit, the audit file, financial statements provide reliable financial information for the readers of those financial statements and the financial health and stability of the governmental unit. It also includes recommendations to strengthen and improve the management and efficiency of the governmental unit, and it ensures that the local government is in compliance with applicable legal provisions. So I'm happy to report in fiscal year 2023, the city of Dubuque received an unmodified opinion, meaning that our financial statements were materially, materially accurate and within this, there was no disagreements with our auditors and that all proposed material audit adjustments were made. So when we look at the statements within the report, there's two governmental wide statements. Governmental wide statements present financial information that, on the city as a whole, and it looks at longer, it's a longer term focus and the annual cost of operating the government. Within that, there's two statements, the statement of net position, which shows our assets and liabilities and whatever is left is our net assets. This is typically seen as a balance sheet in the business world. Also, there's a statement of activities, which is in the business world, we can, would be the income statement, and it prevents revenue and expenditures. So when we look at those two statements, governmental activities increased the city's net position by 26.8 million in fiscal year 23. Program revenue or grants increased by 8.4 million and overall expenditures increased by 10.5 million. In addition to, in the business type activities, the city's net position increased by 16.9 million, expenses increased by 4.2 million, and charges for services increased by 1.7 million. Charges for services would include things in government or business type activities, water fees, sewer fees, those types of things. The next portion of the report is the governmental fund statements. So the main fund there is the general fund. So this is the primary operating fund of the city. It accounts for all financial resources of the general government, except for those that are required to be in another fund. So when we look at this, when we look at general fund revenue, the largest piece for the general fund are taxes and then followed by charges for services. Charges for services includes leases, fuel sales, and ambulance fees. If we look very specifically at tax revenue within the general fund, you can see here that it's a breakdown of different taxes. FY '23 saw an increase of 768,000 in overall, 440,000 increase in property tax and franchise fees increased 303,000. Next, if we look at all of, all of the general fund, it shows the, it shows the gen, all the general fund revenue, overall general fund revenue increased by 5.2 million and FY '20, and FY '23, there's a typo, taxes increased by 768,000 and charges for service increased by 466,000. The large increase was interest and, and fines, and that increased by 6.2 million, mainly related to increased interest rates on invested funds. Next, the other side of the, of the coin for expenditures, this, this graph shows how, what percentage of general funds were from different departments. Public safety is the largest percentage, 44%, and next would be culture and recreation at 22%, and then further down the line as presented here. Next, if we look at general funds as a, as a three-year history, in 2023, we saw increases for public safety and culture and recreation of 2.4 million, and public works increased by 0.9 million. Overall expenditures in the general fund increased by 9.3 million. Next, when we look at the general fund balances, this, this graph looks at our annual expenditures in comparison to our remaining unassigned fund balance within the general fund. The city's budget guideline is to maintain at least 20% of unassigned fund balance to the expenditures. I'm happy to report that percentage for fiscal year 2023 was 57.06. And the, and the unassigned fund balance is used to essentially pay for expenditures in the following fiscal year until tax revenue is received in that fiscal year. And then if we kind of jump back to the, the first statement that I talked about, the statement of net position, this also includes information on net investment in capital assets, which is everything that we purchased related to capital assets, so buildings, land, and other items reduced by the net, the debt that is related with those assets. And though, these figures have remained consistent over the last three years. Also included on the statement of net position is the unfunded, unfunded legacy costs. So these are items related to retirees for ongoing costs that arise from spending that does not, that does not increase revenue. So the, the two here are retiree healthcare or OPEB, which is in blue, and then the pension liability or IPRs expense that would be associated with city of Dubuque employees. And here, once again, as I said before, we had an unmodified opinion. So the second half of our audit is related to compliance. The results of the compliance audit usually result in three different audit deficiencies. The first is a material weakness, and this is the highest level where a material audit adjustments were identified. The next level is significant deficiency that doesn't quite arise to the level of a material weakness, but still something those charges of governance should be aware of. And finally, a controlled deficiency is where there is a mitigating likelihood of a material misstatement. So there is some sort of step involved that we were able to catch that material misstatement before it was presented. And then there are the previous audit results here. In 2022, we had one related to a material weakness over financial reporting. In 2023, once again, we had a material weakness due to material audit adjustments, and this was directly related to a new government auditing standard, which I'll talk about here in one second. And there are no significant deficiencies identified in 2023. That material weakness was related to GASME 96, which was a brand new standard for us to report on. And GASME 96 is related to subscription-based information technology. So when we have a new software, we pay for an agreement, it's kind of related to all those and the payments that set forth outward. This did not ca, cause a restatement of the financial statements, but it was related to our material weakness. In addition, with the compliance, they review our federal expenditures. The auditor's opinion on compliance for major programs for those had an unmodified opinion again, so we had no findings related to our federal programs, which is always great to see. And in conclusion, I want to say thank you to all of the finance department that assists with this process and all of the other departments that provide input and information to us to put this entire report together. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, Brian, for the report. For sharing that with us. Any discussion or questions? Yeah, Ms. Farber.
Thank you and the finance department for the work. I know it takes a lot of iterations to come up with all the component parts of the audit and I very much appreciate all of the work and all of the behind the scenes information and checking and balancing to make sure that it's a feat. And congratulations on having an unmodified or a clean audit. That's really a nice track and a nice trend for the city, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. All right. Oh, Ms. Wethel, sorry.
I just wanted to, first of all, thank you. A lot of time and effort summed up into just minutes of a report, so I appreciate your work. The way that it was presented was really easy to understand for a pretty complicated audit situation, so kudos on that. I did want to point out, when we talk about the page that was our general fund expenditures, I just want to make sure everybody heard this. When we talk about where tax dollars go from our residents, 44% of our general fund expenditures go to public safety alone. That's important. That's an expectation. We heard tonight from GDDC how important that is to our community, what the expectation is to have police and fire as a reliable safety backbone in our community. But a significant amount of our budget goes to public safety. Then we talk about public works. So that when you turn on your faucet, you have water. So I just really want to point out that 55% of our expenditures are only public safety, public works, as they should be. I am in no way criticizing that. I'm just saying for people who are at home watching this presentation, that's a really important thing for us to capture and spread the word on, that we are investing very much in our community's public safety and reliable services. So thank you again for your presentation. I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that.
Thank you, Ms. Wethel.
the finance and budget office for the work that you did on this and also to our auditors for the work that they've done on it. So thank you. All right. Motion here is to receive and file here that presentation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is Five Flags Civic Center FY twenty four annual report presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and view the presentation.
Second.
Motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager, Mike Van Milligan. Leisure Services Director, Marie Ware, sharing information for the Five Flags Civic Center. General Manager, Aaron Rainey, will share a presentation with the city council regarding annual activities and the report for fiscal year twenty four.
Hi, council members. Aaron Rainey, General Manager of Five Flags in Dubuque. So thanks for having me here tonight. Starting off our year in review with a few of our billing updates. Sometimes it's putting lipstick on a pig, but we're trying to do the best we can. One of the biggest things this year is trying to improve the green rooms for the artist experience. You know, adding things as simple as TVs, we have video game systems, we have on order, just little things like that that they can do in these green rooms to try to spruce up the hockey locker rooms that we have. So, you know, trying to get these guys to come in and enjoy the time where one of the pictures has recliners and chairs in there, obviously covering up, just trying to cover up the hardness of the walls and and stuff like that. Other things include logos, cleaning windows, painting all over the building, of course, which is a a natural and a yearly thing to keep up on. Team and I had lots of good events throughout the year. Obviously, Cole Wutzl is one of the bigger ones, all the way through the circus, Beetlestones, Are You Dead Yet?, Static X, Seven Dust, I Know Mayor, you were at that one and enjoyed it. So thanks for coming to that one. So lots of great shows. Obviously, you can see there's a variety between DSO, Lee Greenwood, the rodeo. So obviously, quite the variety of different things that we're hosting here at Five Flags. Well, twenty twenty four by the numbers. As you can see, our event count actually went up, but our attendance went down. Obviously, not what we want to do. And obviously, as we continue with the slides, more explanations on some of that stuff and how we got to those numbers. Gross ticket sales were down from last year as well, which, of course, in turns and returns to your food and beverage. Your food and beverage is obviously directly tied to your ticket sales. If you don't have ticket sales, nobody's going to buy food and beverage. Very simple equation on that. On the income here and expenses, as far as we go here, we did end year at net income loss of one million one hundred and sixty two thousand. Our expenses were one million five hundred and ninety two thousand eight hundred and seventy. The income for the year was down, obviously, for overall, the total was four hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and eighteen. Obviously, that's down about fifty two percent from last year. So obviously, not the numbers we want to see, any of us want to see on on the board here. Expenses, we're doing our best to mitigate costs where we can, try to keep costs as low as possible when and where we can. So that's obviously where we're trying to still keep the cost, you know, below fiscal year twenty three, which was down hundred and eighty thousand. So a little bit of savings there, not savings. But next, moving on, one of the big things, of course, that drives revenue is food and beverage. One of the biggest things we're doing now is our grab and go concept. Some of you may have been to the Five Flags Center and seen this, but been to other places. It's pretty simple. It's a gas station concept. You walk up, you grab your own items, go to the end and pay the cashier. Obviously, with limitations on our concession stance and how they're set up and that nature, this is a way to obviously get more people through and up your food and beverage numbers by getting through faster. Other things that are coming down the pipe for twenty five are we have a new POS system upgrade that's going to be coming will allow people to order their standard hiosk, make their orders, and then just pick up an order from a window. So again, things like that that can cut down on the front end staff, but then the back end staff still popping out their orders. Other things we just my team and I just initiated this year, or excuse me, in late twenty twenty four, early this year, trying to incorporate a couple of new concepts in our local in our bars. We have a new wine bar upstairs and downstairs. At the wine bar, we're doing full bottles of wine, which we never previously did. It was all just these little small bottles of wine from Park Farm, Park Farm. Now we have full bottles that we're serving. We have six different varieties, three are local from Park Farm, Park Farms, Banks to Red, Cheeky Blush, and Daisy Grill. Then we have three other local Iowa ones as well. We also brought in some local IPAs, which we never had on the menu before. So we brought in Back Pocket, Swarm, Tip the Cow, some of these local breweries, and some of the items that people like from there. So some of the things we brought in. Obviously, without the charities, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. Obviously, with us staffing, we have a four hour event once or twice a month, maybe three times a month, and the amount of staff you need at that point is very, very high. And obviously, your day to day staff is is pretty low. So that's where we really rely on our our our, of course, volunteer groups is what we call them, our nonprofits. But as you can see on the list, just a whole variety, all the way from Custom Riders, all the way to Dubuque Y, ROTC. So some of the same faces from last year, but some new ones as well. Kind of showing you Toys for Tots is usually our biggest one because they sell our blinky drinks for most events, and that's the most popular drinks we sell. So that's one of the the biggest groups there. And obviously, they send a lot of people to help us out. So we're very, very thankful for our nonprofits because obviously they help keep us in business and help keep us moving food and beverage usher wise. That's all the things that they include. So it's actually food and beverage usher and sometimes house crew as well that these these nonprofits, when they volunteer with us, what they're doing for us. We have some demographics on the ticket buyers, obviously, different age groups as we go. It just to the this frame and the next one here, I can balance between the two, but basically on the bottom here, just your different graph of what your age group, obviously, thirty five to forty four is our main male, our main group of people buying, fifty eight percent female. You know, and this graph shows, you know, the average income of our ticket buyer is between fifty and seventy five thousand dollars. Dubuque County is obviously in Dubuque is obviously the number one ticket purchaser in our area, Galena, Platteville, Piastas. So basically, anything around us, all the little cities around us are our main ticket contributors, not necessarily from the any real big outside markets. Sorry. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, Cole Wutzl, one of our highest attended events, Doc Dog, that's physically going on as we speak right now. They started loading in on Thursday. They'll be here all the way through till next Monday. So this is yearly one of our biggest events. I know the hotels and the downtown restaurants love it as well because staff rooms alone are one hundred and fifty plus. So for us, it's one of the awesome events we get to bring in. These people come in from North America, Canada, sometimes worldwide. We've had worldwide teams come in. So the people that put it on are the same people that put on the Iditarod. So it's kind of a great combination of people that just come through. So as you, I'm sure, seen in the street here, we have the street blocked off, big tents. We have heaters, which oddly enough, this year, we don't need. But just just a great event. This is a free event. Anybody can come watch for free over the next five, six, seven days. Starts at seven, eight in the morning, goes all the way through till seven, eight at night some nights. But again, just on here because it is one of the great events we do. Real close second is our rodeo that we do every February, the Battle for the Bluff Rodeo. So it's another great event we do as well. Holiday shows attendance last year was about seven thousand six hundred and sixty six guests. Some of the just staff photos, events from different things we did. The top right is Cottingham and Butler. They do their yearly event with us. Bottom left is Dubuque Bridal Show. So and obviously, top center is that rodeo that we were talking about a little bit earlier. Social media, obviously, a big driving force on not only ticket sales, but building and just being relevant nowadays. As you know, in any situation, being on social media is strong. So right now, we're at twenty six, twenty three thousand Facebook followers and just under two thousand Instagram followers. Working on getting on TikTok, but it's very tricky and we've already had some accounts blocked. So TikTok is a little bit different than Instagram and Facebook when you're trying to do things on it. So it's very easy personally, but as a business, it's not quite as easy. Fiscal year twenty four venue partners, and this has actually recently been added to Holiday and, of course, our Seventies, our great partner, Quick Stop. As I did mention earlier about the Grab and Goes, they're our new sponsor for our Grab and Goes. So it's a perfect fit there, locally owned. Quick Stop there, Sharon's Furniture, the TH, I'm on, Three Sixty Five Inc., and then just recently added Green State Credit Union. So I'll get to that in just a second here. Right now, staffing wise, you know, Greg Olson is our still director of our finance, Jesse Kozins, our Director of Operations and Events, and then Ty Bailey is our marketing manager. Newest addition to the team is Bobby Jost. She's our Sales and Partnership Manager. So she's killing it so far. Got a couple of big sales in the first month, month and a half already since she's been here of this year. Nick Farfan is on our event side. So he's rocking it as our events manager, knocking it out of the park, graduated from Lawrence, started with us as an intern, and now he's our events manager. So kind of a cool story there. Rick Bremer is our operations supervisor. And then Zach Geese and Caleb Walling are on our production side of things. Couple of things you do not see there are a food and beverage manager and operations manager as well. So those positions are currently vacant. Anchor attendance, as we always do, we love having Dubuque Symphony Orchestra, Mark and his team back for another year this year. And then, of course, Fly by Night. Unfortunately, their first run at things this year got canceled because of an illness with an actor, but we moved it to March, rescheduled the same exact show, and just got it all running from. We love having the team from Fly by Night with us. Of course, they're very easy to work with and to have in the building. And same with Mark and his team at the Dubuque Symphony Orchestra. I mean, they they fill our room so many nights a year. And then another cool thing they do that we love is the Art Struck. This is if you have never not familiar with this, but basically, they bring third and fifth grade students from all over Dubuque and surrounding areas, and they basically put on pre concerts throughout the day. It's I think it starts at like nine, ten in the morning, and they go all the way through one, two in the afternoon, and they have like hour long, very brief, but fun concerts, you know, breaks the kids into knowing what the DSO is and obviously that kind of music. Upcoming events, next week, Sesame Street, we got Puppy Pals Live, Young Gravy, which is coming up on eleven twenty three, Nutcracker. Of course, the World Ballet comes back yearly. Home Free, doing really good right now. We got our Christmas standard of having Rudolph this year. Harlem Globetrotters are back. Last year, it was canceled due to the weather. Actually, the same thing with Drumline. So those two shows are rescheduled from fiscal year twenty four to twenty five. And probably the two biggest things, and then the third thing that's not on here as well, but two biggest things that I'll address is pickleball. As you, I'm sure, questioning about revenue and events and everything like that, my team, I assure you, my team and I are racking our brains to come up with ideas of filling up revenue sources, filling up dates. Obviously, we're a civic center. We'd all love to have Taylor Swift every night. I think that goes without being said, but there's obviously those nights where you can't. And we got to be realistic about things, and we need to have revenue coming in. So my family loves to play pickleball. I do not. They were talking about it one day over and over and over again for weeks, and it finally dawned on me that I have a big open space in the middle of winter. So I might be able to do something here. So put my team on it, came up with the layout for eight courts that we'll have. Went on PicklePlanner dot com. It's a very easy website for everybody where you can jump on, make your reservations, sign a waiver. It's an all in one stop, very easy for people to do. Our first day is November second. We're going to have an open house. So if anybody wants to come down or even learn about pickleball, we got a pickleball professional coming in that's going to give basically kind of just a you never played pickleball, here's how it is speech type of a thing. So if you're available and you want to stop by, that's the day to do it. We're at around noon on on the second. So we're excited about that. And then one other thing that's on there you're going to see is Wags of the Flags. It's a return of this. We're bringing it back by popular request. I've been GM for just over two years now, I believe, at the facility for just over four. And I can't tell you when I was Director of Operations and Events before becoming GM, even now, two, three, four calls a week for Wags of the Flags. People just love this. We're adding more to it this year, just not just bringing it back. We're adding a pet park, we're adding obstacles for the dogs, like bounce houses, teeter totters, all the stuff you'd see, fun stuff for dogs to do. It's divided up, obviously, big dogs, small dogs. So it's fenced in the middle. Donations go for admission go to the Dubuque Region Main Society and Whispering Hope. So those two benefit from it. So that's a couple of things that are coming up that we're looking forward to. And one other thing that's not on there as well is the Iowa Power Football. You guys may have heard about this, the arena football. We did have them do, let them do a press release a while back. We are in conversations with them about having their season with us next year. Really, it's right now, the conversations are about logistics. We want to get that knocked out. And you know, obviously, when arena football, you've got to use the dashers for hockey, which we haven't set up in fifteen plus years. So a little bit of a, you know, a learning curve there as far as that goes. But right now, we're very hopeful, and I think this is going to happen very soon, that we'll actually have a contract in place for the Iowa Power Arena Football. I was actually on the coach, on the phone with the coach last night about ten o'clock. He's on West Coast time, so it's a little bit different for him. But he's got a couple of players signed already. He's got two quarterbacks signed, and he's got three or four office members signed to the team already. The website active is active. He's already got a partnership with Dolph's Iron Bar. So lots of stuff on that. That's everything. One thing I did want to add very quickly before your questions is I do want to recognize that we did unfortunately lose Rod Baki last week. He's a longtime member of the Five Flags Commission. Unfortunately, I didn't hear about it till Saturday, and I believe it happened on the twelfth. But longtime commission member for the Five Flags Civic Center, I think forty plus years, if I'm not mistaken, of service from him. I just want to, you know, say thank you to him and his family for their service and him for his service as well. But nonetheless, sorry for my voice here. Just thanks to him and his service, and I just want to be recognized for all of his service. Unfortunately, he's not with us, but you know, thank you very much for all of his service.
Well, Aaron, thank you for mentioning that. First of all, I appreciate knowing that, that we've lost Rod in that way. It's unfortunate. He was a longtime servant for the
He was a very big voice for us for many, many years.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you for this presentation. So I know we're probably going to have a number of questions. I'm going to kick us off here just to talk a little bit about it. You know, first of all, let me say, I appreciate the work you and your team are doing. And you mentioned, you know, I went I went to a show this year, been to a few shows there recently, just got to enjoy the symphony not a couple of weeks ago. You know, there's still really good stuff happening at Five Flags. And you started out with the term lipstick on a pig, pretty rough term, right? But it's there's some truth to it with what we know is going on. We've been talking about the facility for years, and we're on the cusp of doing something about it. But we're still in this weird phase right now where things are challenging. So I got a few questions for you. The first is going to be what happened? And the second is going to be what are we going to do about it in this next year? The third question is going to be more about the timeline for the the construction, just so we can talk about it a little more publicly. And Marie, I might bring you in on that a little bit just to to talk about it because I think it's an important part of this whole equation. We do have it in the plan. We've talked about it actively, and we are ready to spend a good chunk of change on actually renovating the facility. So first of all, give us a little bit more of your sense of what occurred that the drop was as significant as it was this year in in revenue.
Well, again, this isn't just us. This is an industry wide thing right now. Obviously, there's factors that play into why or why we are not getting shows. But generally, coming out of COVID, thing to remember is everybody wanted to tour. Everybody wanted to be on the road. Everybody wanted to make money. Everybody wanted to go out to see a concert. Everyone, right? So there's this big high, and everybody's, you know, that. It's coming back down to earth. And costs for us as a building are this very similar for an artist that has to be out on the road and have a bus and fifty two touring people with him and X, Y, and Z. So they're also feeling that, and they're taking the shows that are moneymakers or that they're going to offer the most money or whatever it may be. But they're they're being more selective now. Obviously, you have your major artists that can go wherever they want. But there's also, you know, our niche is that that mid range, smaller mid range people. And industry wide, I just got back from my EVO, which is kind of like the Super Bowl for our industry in Nashville. It was kind of an industry wide thing. Now, obviously, we all recognize it, and we all want to get back out. But that's probably the swiftest answer to your your question. Our event count was technically up. the swiftest answer to your question, our event count was technically up, the people in the building were down.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that is an interesting perspective, because I think it's important for us to recognize what is going on industry-wide. As we think about what to do about it, are there things, you know, you mentioned a few of them, I mean, you got some interesting ideas, the pickleball idea, you know, things like that, coming up with ways that we can try to rectify this problem, but as you look back on what created the problem, thinking about the things that we can control, you know, you mentioned expenses, stuff like that, I mean, are there things that we can control that we could look for a turnaround in this coming year?
Well, it's gonna be more, not to say more difficult this year, obviously, we're continuing to mitigate our costs, but our liability insurance went up 50% alone, you know? Our fixed expenses, you know, are, you know, going up, but they're still fixed, you know, but all that stuff is rising up, just like when you guys go to the grocery store, or we're paying our power bill, or whatever it is, it's the same thing for the arena, only, you know, my power bill's five figures, you know, so it's one of those situations where we can try to mitigate as much as we can, but, you know, part of it is, you know, the building itself, and again, I assure you, I'm the last person that wants to disparage, sorry, disparage the building, because that's, that's not it at all, and it's not a reflection of me and my team in the context of, my team's doing a great job, it's just unfortunately, you know, we've been kicking the can down the road on many, many things in that building for years, it's caught up to us, I'm telling you guys, it's, you know, we're getting hit every week with $5,000 cost here for an HVAC unit, there's been, summertime, I had one, one, two HVAC units using in the building, okay, why is ticket counts down? Do you want to go sit in a hot sweaty building?
Yeah.
It's a big circle, right? They don't come, well then, you saw, then there's no food and beverage, it's, unfortunately, it's a very vicious circle, right?
So, Maria, this might be time for you to enter into the conversation, because this does get more to the asset that we own as a city, so thank you, Aaron, for those answers. Remind us of the timeline of what we're, what we're talking about here in this coming year, we talked about it in the budget cycle, you know, we've appropriated some money for the capital improvement plan for it, where are we at with being able to take Five Flags to the next level and actually fix some of these physical problems that we can control that are standing in our way that we've been waiting on for years?
Right, thank you for the question. Maria Wareley is your services director. So, where we're at is financially, we have funding to be able to start the planning process, so currently in the budget, there is that, then there's four years of funding currently budgeted in the CIP for the actual doing whatever projects are planned out then, and so that's over a four-year cycle of capital years, so doesn't mean, you know, by doing it that way, it doesn't mean like you'll have everything all done at once, and so when he talks about certain things, there are some things that need what I would call triaged quicker in order to be able to fix things, then they'll be the next set, because you've got a certain amount of money through those times. When we talked during the budget process last year, what I explained is that we also have the ASM Global Contract, similar to what we went through with Grand River Center, in that we have a contract with them, their contract is, only it has an expiration date as well, that's coming up. If we're going to look at and do an RFP, which we committed to be able to do that, or look at any changes in that regard, then we would do that before you do whatever the project is. Now, the reason to do that is, you want to have the staff that's working, whether that's their staff or a different company, working as you plan what those things are, and then as they're implemented and built, because we're not redoing the whole thing, then they're there to see each of those improvements go in, as well as give their technical expertise on those things. So, we have two different things that we can do, is starting to move forward on that next step of the management company, but then also quickly after that, being able to go into the actual hiring and design and that sort of thing. The other part, as I shared during budget, is because of my retirement, in the middle of next year, we definitely want to have my replacement hired so that we can have that continuity also with that project. If I was to kick it off, it would mean that there'd be information I'd have, and that's a big load to be able to kind of say, here, here's my brain, and all the meetings we've had about it, so really, for your own benefit as well, it's best for that transition to happen with the new person in my spot as well, so you've got the, you know, it would be better if it all didn't happen in this way, but it's kind of, that's the timing of it, so we are at kind of this in-between years that we're dealing with right here. Also, just to let you know, Aaron and I meet monthly, so it's not like he's kind of out there, we try and always kind of, where are we at, we receive the monthly financials, I was aware that, you know, that was the kind of year they were having, and we have conversations about, to your point, of some of the same conversations and things you're asking about, we get in the weeds more on some of that, but just so you know that that's also one of the pieces that we do as staff with the staff at the center as well.
Thank you.
Does that kind of answer your question?
It does, it's a good start to the conversation, so thank you very much, yeah, I'll open it up for other questions and discussion at this point. Mr. Resnick?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, first of all, I want to thank the Five Flags team, excellent work. I think this, this bad news tonight is actually a best-case scenario, with the team we have working on it down there, to consider this best case, I think the council needs to think of some other things. And so, since the mayor talked about budgeting discussions, and we talked about this phase, this phase has been going, 17 years that I've been here, we've been going back and forth on different things, and, you know, we canceled the referendum, but the people have voted with their feet, so I just think, let me, let me just run through a few things, and this may be, qualify me for Captain Obvious, but I'm gonna just point out a few things, the entertainment tastes and choices have changed a lot since the 1980s, and so I think it's, I don't think we should look at this, the reveal of nostalgia, what's the best thing that we can do for our citizens here? And I think there is a strong case for adaptive reuse, we have this budget that Maria talked about coming up here, maybe $28 million, do we want to continue with this form of entertainment at this point, at that part of the city going forward? These are, one of the things that are tough is getting a yearly report, and, and it's gotten to the point where maybe every four months, we need to really get to the, and understand what are going on in trends. I, you know, I noticed the last two years, like you say, it rebounded, and with part of that success is your leadership, sir, so thank you very much, you're trying everything to get people in there, and maybe just a nicer building would do it, but you mentioned yourself that the national trend, and there's some awfully fancy places out there, the trend is down, and, and so I'm wondering, is this the best thing for us to do to invest in that? I mean, right now, Five Flags, we've taken some of what they used to do, and now we have the Heritage Center, we have the Grand River Center, we have the Q Resort, we've got places we've, we've talked to and are, have taken up a lot of what they're doing, maybe this should be the place for the second sheet of ice that we've talked about, to get tournaments out at Mystique Ice, pardon me, Q Ice. Anyway, there's a lot to discuss, there's a lot coming up, so you said be realistic about things, and I'm, that's what I'm asking the council, about being realistic, about what we might want to do. Again, more data, as the mayor has said, more data is important, so I would appreciate, before the, maybe before we go through the budget, because we're gonna make a huge commitment right away, coming up, about the next four years, is this our plan to improve Five Flags? Do we want that kind of entertainment center, or should we do some kind of adaptive reuse? A question for you, sir, about pickleball, but first, I want to add my voice to your tribute to Rod Baki, he wrote me some fantastic thoughtful letters in handwritten, he was such a great guy, such a fan of Five Flags and Dubuque, what a gem, I'm, you surprised me tonight with that information, I didn't know that.
I was shocked to hear it too.
What a gentleman, a gentleman, amazing. So, there is the immediate problem of $1 million more expenses than revenue, that's a, that's a big number. I think it's been, it's been growing, I remember when it was 600,000, well, then things are gonna get better, 7, 8, 900,000, I think it's maybe 1.2 million difference, and again, it's not, you're, you're doing the best, we're giving you a tough assignment. So, sir, about pickleball, I remember when that pickleball announcement came out, there was some public input about, boy, if we could just schedule it like this, and when they go to this other place, oh, they, they do it this way, and people love it, have you been listening to all that and considering it and making the best choice for our city?
Yes, yeah, you know, to an extent, you have to, I myself, again, mentioned, I'm not a player, so for me, I have to ask other people, because I don't know some of the nuances of, oh, they like to play this, or two people like to play this, or they only last 15, the games left, you know, whatever it is, so I don't know that stuff. The other thing is, we have the Pickle Pole out of Quad Cities, and another gentleman, the Pickle Planner, the guy that does the actual app that we use for people to sign up and sign the waivers, they given us lots of stuff, actually, just Friday, my most recent call with them, I got some court information of opening the courts for free, not free play, open play is what I'll call it, instead of reservations. Currently, the way it's set up is basically anybody who wants to play, they have to jump on to make a reservation, so we're currently adjusting that so they can actually show up and play and go into an open pool and that kind of situation.
Great, thank you, somebody on staff, Anderson Sancy, really knows the game, and I play a lot till my knee tell me not to play so much.
Yeah, yeah, our rent, our rent manager, Nick, has taken this project by the horns and kind of, and kind of run with it, so we're happy with that. And just to circle back, one of the things you did mention about, you know, the bigger people coming to us and that, you know, sometimes bigger isn't better. We don't need to be, compete with the Quad Cities and that stuff, we need to, we need to concentrate on the stuff that we can do, we can get those mid-sized guys either on the way up or just getting there or whatever, 3, 6,000 range, that type of range, it's perfect for us, we don't, we don't need to be 10,000 people, because even if we do that, I assure you that the routing between Quad Cities and Madison or Cedar Rapids and Rockford is more efficient than them stopping in Dubuque and losing those four cities. We gotta, we gotta go where our niche is and what we can, we can do with our building. We can do some stuff to our building and not have to go completely crazy, but there's just basic things of, excuse me, sorry again, just basic things, our roof is 35 foot, standard rigging is 50 now, like, can't get shows, we can't fit them, you know, just weight-wise, you know, all this type of stuff, so unfortunately, this is, obviously, we could sit here for hours per se and talk about this, because it's a circle, right, right back to the ticket sales and all this stuff is just a big circle of this, so I think what we could do with the building could, you know, use it in a way that it's, where we could have our niche, right?
Well, thank you for your enthusiasm and for your leadership, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I have just some questions as it relates to the Historic Theater specifically, so I'm a small venue concert person, smaller bands, I'm not into the big venues as much, took my kids and our whole family up to the Barrymore in Madison, actually, last weekend, packed, sold-out show, doesn't have a thing on our Historic Theater. Our Historic Theater is so beautiful, and so to see more of a small venue show, do we have the capacity to schedule more in our Historic Theater? Are we full on the weekends?
No, I mean, there's always capacity to schedule more, but again, then you're taking that risk of, if the event doesn't go over, you lose money, you know, or, you know, it's about attendance and getting those things, and, you know, I was just at other ASM meetings, and again, even, even in that sense, I'm one of the smaller buildings, I'm one of the smallest buildings in the ASM system, period, and my theater on the other side is one of the smaller theaters, traditionally theaters in our system, 1,200, 2,000 people, they can get those residencies, they can get those longer-term shows, so, you know, that's a little bit of a difference. The other thing on the theater is our rigging, we have problems with our rigging height and rigging in the theater, we just did a stress test last week on our fire curtain, and this is the stuff that's falling. So, you know, we don't want somebody to get hurt, right?
Oh, my gosh.
So, I'm not trying to be dramatic, but I'm also trying to make the point of, you know, we need your support and we need the public support, trust me, I assure you, there's nobody, nobody else that wants to bring in bigger shows than me and my staff, right? You don't think, we want to have like somebody like Taylor Swift, right, of course we would, but, you know, we're also realistic, and that's why, you know, kind of circling back to the questions of the pickleball, the wags, you have to, right? If you can't get the shows, we gotta do some things to fill that. Now, again, obviously, we don't want to become a rec room, per se, we love to have concerts, right?
I think that's where my question is, specifically to, if the larger venue space is maybe not what we are now seeing people want, is a smaller venue like our Historic Theater the place where we should invest more of the money that we have set aside? Is that where we should maybe focus our money?
I would think it'd be more arena, now, again, not that the theater's not important, obviously, there's, there's issues there and whatever as well, but I think booking-wise, you know, boutiques are fancy and hot right now, right, boutique venues and, you know, little things like that, but I guess, to me, you know, staying in that 3,000 to 6,000 person range on certain shows, right, the boutique thing, to that same line, people will pay for the experience, I've learned over and over again, people will pay for the experience. You might have 75% of your people that are average people that want to come in, rock out to a concert, have a beer, popcorn, and go home, there's some people that have a little extra scratch in their pocket, and they want to feel like VIP for the night, so they want to sit up front for an extra 50 or 100 bucks, and then you got the people that money doesn't matter, they don't care, my wife's birthday, whatever the case is, and they want to be VIP, they will pay for these experiences, but we have to give it to them, we're not.
Thank you.
And sorry, not to add to it, but part of that is the artist's experience, as I mentioned on the green rooms, it's the same exact thing, artists talk, artists talk on the road, they talk in the venue, and obviously, we try as a venue, we try to, one great thing that former GM came up with is carbon meats for bands, and, you know, normally, bands just, venues are just, hey, here's their catering, off you go, we're trying to do those little things because we're trying to supplement for the other things that we can't, so it's the same thing with that green room and the TVs, we have hockey, hockey, hockey locker rooms with gang showers, I mean, no artist is gonna come in there, even the crew people, even the crew people don't want to come in and do that, so.
Thank you.
Other questions, discussion on this topic for the evening? So, I think we know where we stand, I mean, we've, this is not a conversation that, I don't think this conversation should be surprising to us, I mean, we've had these challenges coming for a while, I'm also not surprised by the market forces that you've described, that also is something that I think has been recognizable across the scope of a lot of different things, but especially within the entertainment sphere, where people did have a lot of money to spend coming out of COVID and the desire to spend it, and then have slowed down in the last year, especially for things like this. But you also, Aaron, you tied it to the cost for the actual performing acts themselves, which I think is an important thing to think about. You know, I do want to caution us that, you know, this, while, I think it's a worthwhile discussion, Mr. Resnick, to have about what do we want to do here and what's this one to look like next, what do we want this to look like next, I want to caution us to say that this is not the, the end of the Five Flags Civic Center, we have some really specific plans in place for how to move forward with this, we have plans to, what are we gonna, We have plans to, what are we going to, we need to gather the information first and figure out what we need to do, and then we're going to spend the money to actually fix it. And we've already decided to do that. I mean, that is something that we've decided to do. It's not like we couldn't change our mind, but we are there. We are moving forward with this as a venue for what it is. So I hope that we can recognize that this is the case. I also hope we can recognize there are still enjoyable experiences to have at the Five Flags Center. I've had plenty of them myself in recent history, and some of them are just community things. The J-DEF, for example, Julian Dubuque International Film Festival, always there every year and has a great time. I think those things are important things to also recognize. So I would encourage community members to continue to use this space, continue to get in there. They've got some good ideas for things to do in the winter. All that said, we do need to figure out what to do next. We have to start really thinking about this carefully. And these are going to be hard discussions. I already said the night once, the money's getting tighter, and I fully expect that in the year ahead. I think there are multiple different forces that are going to put us in that position as a city. We have to be careful about how we move forward, but I also want us to be, we can't stop dreaming. We have to keep thinking about this and being optimistic and moving forward, using good information, but then also making sure that we're doing this in a way that's going to be good for the facility and good for the community. So hopefully, we can continue to do that. I think this has been a good start to the discussion. It's been a hard one to have, but it's a good one to have. I would like us to consider the possibility of having another one before budget time comes up. I think that was a good idea, Mr. Resnick, and I think we could consider bringing that back up for potential discussion to say, you know, how's it gone for the last four months? And I think we'll see about that and see kind of where we land with things. But for right now, I think this has been a good start to the discussion. All right, well, thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Marie, for everything tonight. We'll go ahead and move us on here from this. Our motion here was to receive and file here the presentation. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number four is request for proposals for leisure services comprehensive master plan consultant services.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Sprank?
A motion that we receive and file and approve.
Second.
And a motion by Sprank, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Leisure Services Director Marie Ware is recommending City Council approval of the request for proposals for leisure services comprehensive master plan consultant services and direct staff to post the RFP and initiate the consultant selection process. The RFP was presented to the Park and Recreation Commission at their October 15, 2024 meeting, and they unanimously recommended approval of the RFP. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Seems like a pretty good topic to discuss right after the last discussion we just had, so open it up for any questions or discussion on this one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Sprank.
I know that this has been on our goals for three years off and on. We've been talking about this. So I'm, and I know that when we get back to this report, it's not going to be pretty. I know a number of citizens have said concerns to me, particularly about Eagle Point Park, but I know a lot of our parks need some attention. So it's a necessary thing to know the state of all of our, the state and condition of all of our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I will point out, I mean, to that point, I think you're right. I think that we are going to have some things that we're going to look at and say, okay, we really need to make some changes here. There are really going to be some things. But I also fully expect, whatever report we get back, to tell us how good we are at a lot of different things that are going on with what we've been doing over the years. You know, one of the fun things about being able to go and see other cities, especially, you know, within our own state, is that you get to see what other places look like and how they operate. I know from a park standpoint, from a recreation standpoint, there's a lot of good happening in our Recreation Division, in our Parks Division, in leisure services in general. And I think we need to recognize that along with, you know, the challenges that we're going to pick up on. Most importantly to me is that we need to know where we stand and what we need to do and how we need to move it forward. So I think that this is a, I'm really happy to be moving this forward at this point to be able to take this to the next level because we've been, we have been discussing this for a while. We did make it a priority in a new way this year. So I think that that's really important for us to really hit the gas on this one. All right, motion here is to receive and file and approve this request. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number five is creation of a precision policing center.
Mr. Mayor?
Farber?
I move that we receive and file and approve the recommendation.
Second.
By Farber, second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief of Police Jeremy Jensen is recommending City Council approval to establish a precision policing center, which aims to enhance the operational efficiency and effectiveness of the Dubuque Police Department. By leveraging advanced technology and real-time data analysis, the precision policing center will serve as a critical force multiplier, enabling rapid response, informed decision-making, and proactive crime prevention. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request mayor and city council approval, and Chief Jensen has a presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jeremy Jensen, Chief of Police. What he said, no, we'll give you the presentation here. So Dubuque Police Department Precision Policing Center. So this is an idea that literally came to fruition about two years ago when I attended a conference. You also hear this is called a real-time crime center. There's a lot of pieces. I liken this idea to like a puzzle. You see the picture, but you've got a bunch of pieces of the puzzle and you're trying to put the puzzle together. And so for the last couple of years, we've been doing that. A couple of pieces that you've seen already. Earlier tonight, you heard the automated license plate reader technology. That's a piece of the puzzle. Our RMS, our records management system that you all approved the contract for last council meeting, that's a piece of the puzzle. Our public safety cameras have been a big piece of this puzzle for a long time. And then our drone program is another piece of this puzzle. So back in May of this year, we sent a committee, which consisted of Captain Scott Baxter, Lieutenant Luke Bach, who's with me tonight, right there, and then Information Technology Alicia Turner from that department, from the Engineering Department, Dave Nest, which we know is our public traffic, or our camera, public safety camera expert, and then Troy Kress, who is a drone extraordinaire from the Engineering Department, to the International Association of Chief Police Tech Conference to kind of just start to look what is out there. What can we do? What are we doing? Couldn't we do better? So what is making this kind of eminent in what's going on now? You all made us a top 10 priority here about our staffing. You've done that a couple of times now. This is huge. And as we look at how we can do that, and as I've reported to you before, there's some hindrances in hiring for sworn police officers right now. I just attended a meeting with some of the Eastern Iowa Chiefs of Police. We're all in the same boat, lower numbers, recruitment numbers. We're still getting recruitment numbers, but still lower numbers. The amount of training it takes to get a sworn police officer, you know, we're talking from, if an officer leaves today, if I hire somebody tomorrow, we're still talking nine to 12 months by the time we can get them, between all the hiring things, between civil service, the state-required training and all that. So it takes a while. So here's three numbers I want to throw out at you here. So 115 is our sworn officer allocation right now. We have never been above 108 in all our time. What I'm proposing puts us at 109 sworn officers, but not losing employees with this. So this is the proposal. So our strategic plan, so the Dubuque Police Department has a strategic plan. We make one, the senior management team does every year. This has been on ours since I've been chief, really about the force multipliers. And you've heard me talk about this before. We looked at that again this year and said, you know, how can we do that? You know, non-sworn civilian staff, and I'll talk a little bit more why there's a benefit to that, and then leveraging our technology. Again, we've had the base, you know. We have this gift of all of the public safety cameras we have. That's the start. That's that one piece of the puzzle that started all this. So a precision policing center, here's what it is. It's a centralized hub. It integrates the technology, data, live intelligence to support public safety in real time. So, you know, what officers do on the street, real time. But again, we don't have officers everywhere. It also uses the public safety cameras, private cameras with permission. You heard that earlier in the ALPR presentation. We talked about that there's a private side that can do and that can buy into systems. Our automated license plate readers, drones, data analytics, integrated software to monitor activities, respond rapidly to ongoing incidents and emerging threats. So why, why a PPC? So simply, here's what it is, increased efficiency. So we talk about just simply using our public safety cameras. Our officers use it all the time, right? And our citizens and the public of Dubuque expect us to use that. They call 911 and say, have you checked the cameras? Have you done that? It takes time. And like I said in the previous presentation, one officer told me there's three hours I would have spent behind the camera searching for this, which would have been great and we would have solved it, but be able to speed it up and do things in that to help us be just more efficient. And just the amount of time, even the traffic crashes, an officer has to drive, a traffic crash happens on the west side of Dubuque, middle of the day, we know what traffic's like. To get to, they have to come down to the center to look at the camera to see what happened. This is a way we can do that. The enhanced situational awareness, what does that mean? So I was lucky to visit the Winston-Salem, North Carolina, Real-Time Crime Center back in July and how they're using it for a situation where an informed officer makes better decisions. So they're giving them more, using the technology, giving better information to respond. People under stress call 911 a lot of times. I shouldn't say a lot of times, but it's not uncommon for the call to not be as it comes out. And so officers think they're responding to one thing and go to another. This can help with that. Proactive crime prevention, have somebody that's watching and looking and kind of anticipating things before they happen. Improved response times, more accurate. So, and this can, this is a public safety thing. It's not just police. So for example, say a fire comes out and it's out on Kennedy Road or even go out to Chauvinelle, let's go out there and say something happens out there. We're able to use the real-time or the precision policing center to look at the cameras and say, hey, fire, it's nothing showing. Because they want to know all this stuff, right? They want to know a lot of things beforehand and how they respond. Or even like traffic crashes and things like that, we can give more information, too. Our enhanced officer safety. Again, what I saw in Winston-Salem, one thing they said was really neat and really good use of it was officers that end up in a foot pursuit. Very dangerous for an officer to be in a foot pursuit. Lot of unknowns. Having been there many years ago chasing people, not anymore. But as many years ago chasing people, you've got a lot of things going on. You're trying to keep them in mind and you're getting on, trying to get on your radio, and you're like, I'm in an alley by, you know, trying to get that on top of the stress. With the, like in Winston-Salem, their Real-Time Crime Center, Precision Policing Center will actually call out that and say, hey, because they can use the technology, log into a body camera. They can use the GPS in the body camera and say, this is where the officer actually is at, and this is what we're seeing is going on. They're hands-on, they're fighting with them, they're using both hands. You know, not the radio, and having been in that, the radio wraps, it's gone, you can't find it. So that's a really great way for officer safety. The proactive policing, again, we talk about the predictive side and the crime analytics, knowing where things at, being precision policing. You know, not just kind of guessing and putting things together, but saying this really is an area and using data just to support that. And again, better use of our resources, which is the improved resource allocation. Our enhanced public trust, again, we want to be accurate. We want to be, we have a commitment to our public to solve crime. And that really is it, and we have been able to do that. We can do it when we can do it very quickly. You've heard me say this before, you know, the first 48 hours on a homicide, you've seen that show, in Dubuque, it's first 48 minutes because of our technology. We owe that to our victims, not days, weeks, months, years. This is stuff that we can, if we can use our technology to the utmost, we can solve things quicker. And then the investigative support, which I kind of alluded to. So why non-sworn civilians and what's the benefits and cons? So policing in my 30 years has gotten more complex. You know, we have become more experts, you know. 30 years ago, it was arrest the bad guy, put him in jail, that's what you did. Now it's, you know, we talk about brain health, we talk about all these different things. We've got to, now technology, you've got to be experts in. What this allows us to do is being, for the person to be an expert in one thing, where a police officer has to be an expert in all these things, we can take some of that off their plate. Again, making better decisions and not having to be the expert in certain things. It does not have the same hiring parameters as a sworn officer does in the state of Iowa. It's not going to take us 12 months to bring somebody up to speed, you know, and get them to where they need to be. And they're not doing the arrests, they're not doing the use of force and things like that. So that's part of what that is. So it also doesn't have the limitations of physical ability, hearing, eyesight, the written testing, all that stuff that we have to do for a sworn police officer. And like I said, it doesn't have the extensive academy training or the extensive field training program. So there's cons of that. The cons is that it's not a body on the street. It's a body. We're reallocating the resources, a force multiplier, as I talked about, but it is not a physical body on the street in a uniform in a car. So here's the positions that I'm asking that we reallocate the sworn position for, and starting with the precision policing techs. This is three positions to cover our busiest hours. This will not cover 24/7. We do have some slow hours, and it would be not a good use of resources. So looking at that, which is generally our evenings and afternoons, evenings, and through bar closing is our busiest hours. What do they do? They use, again, the technology, using the camera systems. They're monitoring the data and analysis, they're getting the info as it comes in because part of this, what I'll talk about, is technology, some software and stuff, communication, being more effective on the communication. Dispatch does a great job. When we get a big incident, dispatch is flooded. They don't have time to go back and look at the cameras, don't have time to get more information, look things up in-house in our RMS system. You know, who does that person associated with? They're answering phone calls, that's what they're supposed to do. Technology management, managing the technology we have, using it to its fullest. Incident documentation, again, this is critical. I mean, we need to be accurate in our documentation. This is another way we can use all of this to do that. The collaboration, collaborating between each other, better collaboration to the officers, better collaboration between our regional partners. And we talked about that a little bit earlier with the flock and being able to do it, but this is really physically talking, hey, something happened. I know that this happened in Rockford, there was something with that, using the intel, because this is somebody, this is their job, this is what they're going to do. Connect that dot, make a phone call, and maybe we can do some things with that. And then internal and external partnerships. And I talk about internal, we have a great working relationship with all our departments in the city, as I talked about, our committee that did this. But there's external partners, you know, a safe community. We talked about this, the best safe communities when not only the police, but the community is also involved in the safety. So starting to develop that. Like I said, I talked about the flock, but there's even other camera systems or technology that actually will allow an interrupter into any security system and tie it into the system to be able to do that. Again, with permission, if that's what they want to do, they can do that. And it's a very minimal cost type thing where somebody come in. minimal cost type thing where somebody come in. Again, talk about force multiplier, it takes a, right now to go get security footage, we have some cybersecurity limitations that go with this. And then we have to find the person that knows how to run the system, we have to know what the system is, find players, it's very, very slow process. Using technology that's out there, we can speed that up a whole bunch. And again, save some time. So that was three positions. One position is a crime analyst. Part of the technology, so this is something we kind of looked at, we know data, we all work in the data world. We did some things last year, improve our data on the police department, but it's not where I really want it to be. Our committee that went, ended up talking to a group that has a federal grant that's called Crime Analyst in Residence Program. They talked to them, we submitted an application and got a scholarship essentially where they'll provide training, development of a customized data system, crime analyst system, look at all of our stuff that we have and tell us how we can best tie things together. Great, totally free, doesn't cost us a thing, they actually have already been on site, they fly in, they do this, it's great. But there's a lot of things we can do with that. We do it right now very reactively with data and there's a very good opportunity for us to use data proactively. So as you look here, you've got data analysis, pattern recognition, you know, where are things happening at? You know, are, is this, anecdotally, do we know this has happened? We know perception sometimes drives, drives a reality for people when we actually, we can say, okay, no, this is what we have going on there. Intelligence gathering, right at criminals' travel. I mean, there's, they're no longer just local criminals, they go everywhere, as you heard earlier. A reporting of that data, you saw how that could be used a little bit earlier, collaboration between different agencies and different entities, which we already do, but there's a lot better method for us to do that. The training and development. And then again, external, internal and external partnerships, they're able to do that. Currently, we do have a crime analyst intern, just kind of one of these things that fell in our lap, got approached by that, got somebody that was interested and a Lawrence College student that said, hey, I think this is something I want to try, so we brought, brought her on and it's like, wow, this really does work, we're starting to see some benefits of that. This is why we'd like a full-time position in addition to that, to help. And again, they'll work with the whole department, but really it's designed to be part of the Precision Policing Center. Criminal computer forensics. So about a year ago, we met with the IT department and we said, where have we got, got to go with techno, technology in this realm? This is the fastest growing criminal aspect. It's crazy, as we know, trying to keep up with hackers and all those things. So we, we actually, another thing fell in our laps, we had an intern fall in our laps that said, hey, I want to try something. Brought him in with collaboration with Chris Coleman and the IT department and really it was, it has been just like, oh my goodness, there's a benefit here. What, really what the benefit is, again, is the speed. So right now to send computer forensic stuff, like a computer out to be forensically analyzed, about a year. That's what we talk about, this slow process, because it's an, it's a very expertise-filled position. We do have the ability to do some phones, but rudimentary, we didn't realize our system actually allowed a lot more than what it does for analyzing phones. Our intern actually said, hey, I can make this work better for you, and did. It's just quicker and it's quicker and it's quicker for our victims and our case response. And again, this is a position that not necessarily tied to the PPC, but is another plus factor, force multiplier for us. Again, if we don't have to, another area to be an expert in, I can dabble in it as a police officer, but it takes quite a bit to be an expert in, so this is another position for that. And then finally, suggesting trading one of these sworn positions to fund the software and hardware. This is, there's a lot out there and as the city manager says to me, we want to be the best and how can we do that? And so looking at, like I said, I talked about a little bit about the software that ties a lot, it really is just tying our, all the software together. Because what happens, you have a bunch of companies and they may not necessarily talk together, we're not using our data to the fullest or our, our systems to the fullest. So using software to tie things together. You talk about like our drone program, so we have the drones, we're able to do a lot of search and rescue, a lot of surveillance and things like that with, with our drones, but it's line of sight. So the next iteration of that is drone as a first responder, using the drone to respond to things which require software and requires a certification that's not in sight. You can fly it out of sight, a three-mile radius, we actually map this. And if, and what we're proposing is that you move it around a little bit and we pretty much can cover everywhere in Dubuque as we do that, just a little mobility with it. And then it really is just our data, data, data. And I talked about this earlier, our informed officers are, make better decisions, they're more accurate, ultimately more efficient and they're able to really, well, I mean, you talk about retention, you know, if it feels like I'm just going call after call after call, follow-up after follow-up after follow-up and without, feels like support, you know, we talk about retention, that's one area that, that we can improve on, on that. So helping them out there and again, using a, using an expert, so to speak, to help them out there. So with that, I'll leave it for any questions.
All right, chief, thank you very much for the presentation. Let's open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Yeah, so chief, I want to applaud you for your puzzle and I like the way that you're putting all the pieces together, using the different kinds of technology that currently exist with the new, more transparent technology that's on the future horizon for your software and hardware. And I, I think it's just a really clever, unique way of enhancing the police force and the skill sets and being more efficient. And the question that comes to my mind is, where are you going to find the technicians? Where are you going to find the analysts and the forensic specialists? And are you able to at this time, put a little hook in those interns and see if you can retain their talents? Because it sounds like you've started to dabble a little bit in how these technologies can be, you know, basically your newest best friend in the department, if you will, and enable everything else in that puzzle to fit together. But I am curious about who that new, who these new people will be and how you plan to attract their attention.
Sure. So really, you know, you're looking at grooming your own talent, as you said. It's, our colleges locally, we have a data analytics program at a college, we have a computer forensic program at a college, this is where these are coming from, these are another area to do that. Yeah, we tipped our, dipped our toes into that water and it's like, wow, this is actually better than we expected it to be. And we've had some fabulous interns, just motivated people, and as we know, if you get motivated people. The technicians, so we've had interest from ex-officers, we've had interest from just people that may work in this, this realm already with, with surveillance and cameras and that kind of stuff to say, oh my goodness, this is, again, this is kind of cutting edge. I don't know of another center like this in Iowa, they're, they're starting to pop up everywhere, I'm sure there'll be one following pretty shortly, but nobody has the infrastructure we have for this. And that's, and that's what makes this so amazing for us.
Well, I appreciate the, the opportunity to be leading edge in the state of Iowa and I would also recommend getting your job specs pretty tight and specific so that when you do those interviews, and you know, I support this 100% by the way, obviously, that the parameters and the skill sets required are pretty well denoted as well as on-the-job training. Because you're not going to, I don't think, find that perfect person, but you can certainly find, if you will, the best athlete or the best suit that can do these. So yeah, very, very creative and a good way of increasing the base of your team without having to go through the sworn officer route. So appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I think this is a fantastic and innovative solution to the many challenges that you've talked about with our police department today. I think it's really important that it brings benefits for officer safety and community safety and taking advantage of current technologies. I like the idea of utilizing non-sworn employees. I think it's going to take, allow everyone on the force to utilize their expertise to the best that they possibly can. And I think the title of your proposal really says it all, precision policing. And I think it's a model we can be proud of. You talked a lot about data. Do you see like after this has been, would be implemented, that you could give us some reporting on how effective this, I mean, it's really a big change, how you see it's been effective for your department?
Yeah, for sure. And that, and that's, I think, the benefit of having the, for one, a crime analyst that helped with some of, to put us some of this stuff together. That's not my background, that's not really any of our backgrounds, but you're, you're right, there needs to be, it needs to be, as anything, any initiative, reevaluated, looked at, what needs to be tweaked, what's working, what's not working. And, and quite honestly, because of your all supporting, your all's part of this, yeah, we had bring this back to you and say, this is working or it's not working.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Jones. This is really exciting, I'm always proud of you guys, but here you are thinking outside the box, quite a ways, had a, had a way to make the box better and it's quite impressive. You mentioned former officers had some interest in doing some of this perhaps. Had dinner with a former officer the other night and he said, what if we, what if they hired a few part-time former officers as civilian employees to just go out and take routine crime reports and get guys back in service, back in the cars? Just thought I'd plant that seed, that could be a force multiplier too, because I, I know that eats sometimes half of an officer's day. This guy didn't want to go do that, but he just thought it was a good idea.
And then that is, if you look across some trends, looking at, you know, that we have community resource officers, interns, community service officers that go out and do some of that stuff, that's, that's on our horizon. That's definitely something that we're going to be looking at.
You have a, you clearly have a need for specialty people and to expect those specialists in data management, analysis or whatever, to also have all the specialties that a street police officer needs is just not realistic. In medicine, one of the old sayings is that a specialist is someone who learns more and more about less and less till they know everything about nothing. And a generalist is a guy who learns less and less about more and more till they know nothing about everything. And you've got to find the niche in between. So you need a specialist that knows a lot about a small slice of the pie. When, when I was first a paramedic and I was one of the first ones in Iowa, trying to find our niche in healthcare and explain to other people, you know, we've got this big pie of taking care of the patient, I've got this little bitty slice that's going to keep you pink for the next 15, 20 minutes. I'm going to be better at this slice than you are, but I'm not going to worry about the rest of the circle, the rest of the pie, I'm going to worry about giving you a viable patient in my 15 minutes with the patient by being better at it than anybody else that's going to touch the patient for that 15 minutes. And that's what you're talking about, you're talking about a very specialized niche in the police department that needs someone focused on that all the time, that's trained for that, that isn't worried about all the other things that you worry about. And you're doing such a great job of, of taking these officers and making them into problem solvers of all nature and focusing on the emotional IQ, for instance, I'm so proud of that, that's, that's a big deal. That's a big change for a guy, for lock him up, put him in jail kind of guy. I love the work that you're doing in, in human services with brain health issues, trying to find a reason not to arrest somebody who's having a brain health issue. And that's great. And at the same time, you've, you've got that issue of keeping people safe from the person who's having the brain health issue and not letting them be harmful. So I think you're so far ahead of the game in, in street policing and making that better and making it safer and making it more humane. And I love that, that the what-if-it-was-family thing that Mark started is still hanging there and in people's minds. This is the next step. You know, people didn't come on, come to be police office to be technicians and analysts, technicians and analysts that want to do a little backroom police work though, that's, that's a great move, a great direction. So congratulations, I wholeheartedly support this.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So chief, you have a slide that says, why a PPC? Is there a where? Where is this or is this a virtual spread around the department kind of place?
I'm glad you brought that up because I forgot to include that slide. So we actually, we're in the current process, so as you know, we're limited for space. We had, again, working with our IT department and the way they have changed and how they work and where they're moving, we have a computer room in the DLEC. It's, it's an office space, it's with that. We're able to, we're in the current process of remodeling that to house the three technicians and the data analysts very comfortably. And it's a good space that we have that's right there, we don't want them spread out everywhere, we want them to be able, because there is some, one thing that I learned, visiting the Real-Time Crime Centers is like, you've got to build trust with your officers, they really have to understand, the way we build that is not remotely within the same building and starting to do that. So, yeah, so that's in the process right now, we're in the process of remodeling, setting that up so we can even just be more efficient where our, our camera systems are and some of that stuff.
And when you said trade one position for software and hardware, are you saying perhaps that these six new employees, three technicians, one crime analyst, one computer forensic and trading that, we would be fully staffed?
No, we'd still be short. It gives us a little more manageable number, it gets us, where I talked about, the numbers of 108. You know, that's an ultimate goal, that's where we need to be. Right now, using that number of 115, we're down 20. You go down to 108, that changes that number. Now we have a really good recruitment class and we're starting, we started interviews with last week, quite the biggest number we've had in a while, almost double of what we've had in a while. So we're really optimistic about this and to get it, it gives us that manageable number. But this is, you know, again, I hired 10 officers right now, it's a year from now. This is more imminent, it's more like, our ultimate goal with this is to have it up and running by January 1st completely.
So if we have 95 right now and you hired 10 and then with the, so that'd be, you know, 105 and then these will help everybody, right? So there's a lot, and what are the chances we'll get all 10?
Yeah. Well, actually, the ultimate goal is to be 109, that is our total goal to be there is where we want to be. Again, it takes, takes us a while to do that. So looking at it and using six positions out of seven that we've never had, we've never had the bodies in our building, using six of those positions and transferring to this, it gives us a quicker, imminent response and also, again, back to that, using a resource that's very specific, that will support everybody, a force multiplier.
And where you visited, I would think it would be a positive effect on morale and did it have that effect?
Yeah, and that's what, one of the things they said, so I'll give you this, Winston-Salem, if I remember correctly, they're down 120 officers? And so this is one way they're trying to do something with that and they said, this is, but as officers started, it's like, oh my gosh, this is so much more efficient for me, I can do this, I can, I mean, I don't have to come in and do it, I can call, hey, what do you got on this? Here's the data. They can do what they're, as Councilmember Jones said, they can go out and be the cop on the street and do what I need to do on that and not have to come in and look at cameras and do this and follow it up on it and, and again, just takes a lot of time.
Fantastic. Sounds like it's been in the works for a while, Mr. Van Milligan, have you been a part of this for like eight months, a year to get to this?
Well, I can tell you that Jeremy and his team have put a tremendous amount of work into this and research and not just the team at the police department, even though he's got a fantastic team there. But other, as he mentioned, he took three other city employees to their last International Chiefs of Police Conference to look at all the technology that's coming out today and how we think it could be used. So, yeah, they've been working on this for a long time and I just had a presentation by his team about three weeks ago and I was just blown away by it and I knew you'd be excited about it and I looked forward to bringing it to your attention.
Thank you, thank you, chief, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ruffel.
I want to say that your memo was a great staff memo because it really helped me, I started out reading the memo feeling really unsettled about it, I'll be honest. I don't like the idea of saying, we're going to have a goal of fewer police officers. However, what you included in there was, once we get to 109, we'll reassess. And I like that. So thank you for including that, it made me feel a lot more at peace with thinking about this, with that taken out of the mix. The fact of the matter, that we've never actually, that we won 115 and we've never had more than 108, I got to tell you, I feel like I should have known that, but that made me step back and think, we got to do more to support our officers who are there right now. In healthcare, I would not use this as a force multiplier term, but kind of it is. Right now in hospital nursing, we're employing virtual nurses. Virtual nurses can answer a call like while the other nurse is waiting to get in, they can double-check medicines with a nurse, they can talk through an admission paperwork with a nurse, they can remotely come in when a new nurse isn't really sure to help that person out. It's a support system remotely. They have a knowledge or an expertise in something potentially someone else doesn't, it's having a backup. When I started being a baby nurse, I would never imagine that. But there was also only one per diem nursing job available at Mercy Hospital when I graduated from nursing school. We have a huge shortage of nurses right now. So I don't mean to dive into much to healthcare and I am a generalist, so I'm not really sure what you think of that. But anyway, I do, I do want to say that in the end, the idea of adapting to a new game is what we're all about right now and you did it and you did it in a really thoughtful way. So thank you. A couple of questions, I had one email that asked me, are we creating a new department? We're creating a skill set of individuals different within our department, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Structurally, this will still fall under our staff bureau side of that, so.
It's just non-sworn?
Right.
Correct, okay. The other is, you did a great job with the budget impact. Could you, page number six of your staff memo dove into the budget impact and I just, as it relates to budget, future budgets, if you could speak to that just a little bit? And the other thing is, there going to be like one-time, non-recurring expenses? And the other thing is there going to be like one-time, non-recurring expenses that will be affiliated with starting the, the precision policing department area?
Yeah. So if you, if you look at, at the budget, so really there's, what we're looking at immediately, there's not really the immediate budget impact eventually down the road because, and then we heard this earlier, somebody presented, you know, the recurring cost of software. You know, that's the way it goes now. You, you pay yearly now. Subscription, that's the word I'm looking for. If you look at how this is, is set up and how you can, can fund it, what the part that doesn't fund beyond a couple of years is the software side of that. Everything else funds within that, but it's the software side that has that recurring cost because this eventually kind of, well, it doesn't go away, is what happens with that. Trying to think what else I can answer for you on that. Well, there's, yeah, that, and also part of that, there's some carryover funds that will go from this year into next year and being able to cover that for a couple fiscal years on that.
I think that is my last question. I just want to say that when you hit 109, I want you to come back and tell us what you need.
I've promised my officers I would do that.
Thank you.
I will.
Mr. Jones?
One other thought. This isn't the first time we've had a conversation kind of like this. Not too long ago, well, pretty long ago, police officers were the call tapers and the dispatchers. And that became, that has become a very specialist, non sworn field with its own certifications, its own accreditation criteria, its own lot of things. And that's, none of you would want to step into that environment. None of them would want to step into your environment. And so we've, we've been in that kind of conversation in the past. The same thing at fire. We had firefighters acting as dispatchers who frankly weren't very good at it because they wanted to go to the fire, they didn't want to talk about the fire. And when we changed to civilians, it, it got better. Not without growing pains, but it got better. And now it's really pretty darn good. It's professional on its own. And the civilian support services behind the officers in the, in the field include the dispatch agencies, include the IT department right now. So we're just growing that, that, that back room that you desperately need for the, for the frontline folks to work, for the frontline to work well. So again, I'm really excited about this. Good stuff.
And I'd like to reiterate, it's, that does not replace dispatchers. We still need the dispatchers to take the call.
I'm just saying, we haven't, we've been there before. We've taken, we put officers back in police cars. We put different people in the, in the dispatch role. You're going to put, take officers out of the computer room and put them back in the street and grow that capability in the back room, just like what the evolution that's occurred in dispatch. They got really good at what they do because they were allowed to just do that. And you're going to have some new people that are going to be able to get really good at what they do and build your network. This, this can be a big deal.
All right, well, I'll jump in. And I, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm coming at this a little more cautiously than everybody else, sounds like. I find myself a little less excitement, I think, than my colleagues, but this conversation has really helped me. And here's the reason I feel this way. In, in my mind, there, there are some serious problems or circumstances, I'll call them, that we're really trying to solve here. One is a lack of personnel. That, that's a big driver of this and I totally get that. And we, we all support that. We've said so multiple years in a row. And we also are facing a rapidly changing information technology environment. I mean, so rapidly changing that it can do stuff that gets downright scary. And we've had that conversation at this table, just about the automated license plate readers when we, when we talked about those. It took a while for us to get comfortable with that as a group to move it forward because in some ways, there are horror stories out there about what technology can do when you connect it to policing, when it's used poorly. The other thing is that we, we need more efficient use of the data that we have in general. I've, I've heard you say that and you said that multiple times before this presentation, that even tonight, you know, the three hour story, that, that it, there's so much technology that we have at our fingertips, we know how to use it, we just can't do it in time because we don't have the, the staff to pull it off and do those things. So I get all that. But in, but one thing I want to point out, this is a pretty big change in our approach to how policing is going to work in Dubuque. It's not, you know, this is, this is like, it's great to think outside the box, but this is actually like jumping right over the edge of the box and standing outside and being like, we're going to do this really new thing, which isn't bad in and of itself, but it comes with risks that I hope that we thoughtfully and carefully think about as we move forward with this. You said in your presentation that, you know, in talking to the city manager, you, our goal is to be the best. One of the things, I think a really important factor that makes you and your force the best at what you do is the connection you have, the personal human connection that you have with our residents and the people that you serve. You know, when I think back to, when I think back to the pandemic, that then all of a sudden became a dual pandemic and reckoning of the racial history of the United States together, I will never, ever forget the approach that, that you and your department and the former chief took in being very connected, in a very human and in, in really a vulnerable way with people who were going through those challenges specifically and, and hurting from that, primarily people who were not white and not majority population in our community. And you very specifically made relationships as a force that have had lasting effects to your ability to work with people effectively and be able to do those things. You, you can still do that when we start to lean on technology, but there is a danger that if we lean too far on that technology, we lose the human connection. And we can argue all day about the philosophy of technology and where it's going. We can do that, but it's, it's just, that's the way things are right now. So I guess what I'm saying is, my hope is that as we do this, because I am going to support it, I mean, this, this conversation has been really helpful, in particular, a couple of things. What you just said about your virtual nurses and, and you've, you've kind of stressed as well, Mr. Jones, those two pieces were really helpful in helping me to frame what this really is. This is a support for the officers. But the folks that you're going to hire to do this are not likely going to be in direct communication with our, our community members all that often. It's going to be, it'll be a very technical relationship that they're going to have. That in and of itself is not bad, but it has to come with guardrails. So we've talked about this with the, the license plate readers and the speed cameras that we've discussed. There has to be guardrails on how we're going to be able to use data, access data, how far we're going to push this idea of, you, you called it proactive, but it starts to lean towards predictive a little bit and that's where things get really kind of challenging, I think, to predict human behavior in a way that we really want to and have technology do that for us. I hope that we can, because when you, at the same time that you lose sworn officers and gain, you know, people more quickly, we have to make those, make sure that those people are still following extremely high ethical standards, of course, high legal standards, but high ethical standards as well, and doing a job that is going to be based on what's best for people first and not trying to move, not put efficiency over that, that need to follow those high standards and be careful with people's lives. Because you do dangerous work. You do, you do things that are, they're inherently dangerous and people are at their most vulnerable stage. So I hope I'm making sense as I say all this, you know, because those are my concerns as we walk into something like this where we start to lean more on technology. But I, I also trust you because you've, you've proven that as a force. You've, you know, I, I have a strong trust in our police department and, and I trust the, the people at this table and, and people in the city manager's office and the staff to do the right thing when it comes down to it. So I, that, those are kind of my thoughts as we move towards this.
And I would, this is not to negate the citizen contact, right? This is positions that we have never had, that people have never interacted with in the community. I would argue that this could help free up the officers to spend more time with the people, you know, because right now it's, I got to go call the call the call. Yep, I got your call, I got to take that, I'm going to go back and check the cameras. I'll be back and I'll get back to you and do this and that, where this helps them actually be able to spend more time in that realm. Because that, that has been one thing that the officer, you know, I don't have time to do this, or I even heard one officer say, well, yeah, they wanted to sit and talk about the family, but I didn't have time, I had to go to the next call, to be able to do that, that connection. And, and I can reassure you, I still have the mantra that get on a first name basis with people. This is not, and I tell every new officer this, the whole goal is to be on that. The proactive and, and versus predictive, you're right. And, and there is, you know, you're looking at, is it behaviors or are you looking at what's going on? And that's the difference. And so when we're looking about proactive, our officers out there to be proactive, to be very accurate with that, we need data to be proactive. Because then it comes down to my perception, my, you know, to be able to do that. So there is a fine line and I totally agree with you, it's easy to cross into that. The guardrails, as we've made perfectly clear, very important to us. This is not facial recognition. There's no, none of that going on, not looking at that. It's not there, right? There is not legislation, there's not things that cover that. It's everywhere, but not in law enforcement at this point in time. It's looking at, like you, like I said, the license plate reader, it's not reading people, it's reading vehicles. You know, that's the things we're looking at. As we're looking at software, if it's, it's not looking for race or things like that. If you're looking at, hey, I'm looking at a shirt, you know, as we go to a disturbance and there's four white males there, what's the identifier that changes them? You know, and that, that's the things that we look at. The clothing, that kind of thing, more accurate. Again, I'm not going out with every white male that's here to try to figure out what's going on. What I'm doing is now I'm getting more accurate, more pinpoint, I need the one with that shirt that has on it. And again, our technology is good enough that we can tell the type of shirt, when, you know, the first technology was like, yeah, they, I think they have a shirt on, you know? And this is in now with color and things like that. So, but you're absolutely right. And that, that is the absolute, it moves fast and legislation doesn't keep up. But I know this city's committed to the idea that there is guardrails for this stuff. Not saying we're opposed to it, but we got to make sure it's done right. And I think we, that was one thing we came out with the license plate reader and the speed cameras, to do it right. We're not going to just do it to do it, we're going to do it right.
Mr. Mayor?
Mike first, then I'll come back to Ms. Farber.
One of the things that Chris Coleman says, who's head of our information technology department, is high tech does not mean you're eliminating high touch. And, you know, we're still going to have a school resource officer program, we're still going to have a thirty, over thirty-year-old, community-oriented policing program. And I will bet you dollars to donuts, you go to some events at Comiskey Park next year and you'll see these three civilian employees out there with drones and showing kids, look how this works. It's not going to be, they're going to be in some closet somewhere, nobody's going to know who they are or ever see them or ever talk to them. They'll be at the Rotary Club demonstrating the equipment so people get comfortable with, okay, what are you trying to accomplish here and how are you trying to accomplish it? It's not going to be some kind of secret force by any means.
Yeah. And I appreciate you saying that. And, and I think we're saying the same thing, basically, because I wasn't suggesting secret force necessarily, but what I am suggesting is that you, there are pitfalls that we need to recognize and we need to pay attention to as we start to lean more heavily on technology. We just need to, we just need to pay attention to them and not gloss over them as if they aren't important. And I think we're all saying that same thing.
Right. And just a follow-up to Mike's point, the more you use, the more comfortable you are and the more it gets demystified. And demystifying technology, especially AI right now, is very important. And it is here. It is to be used. It is helping us become more efficient. And there will be parameters and there will be guidelines, and I know that Chris and the IT department will, will attach those to the definition of what can and cannot be done through the network and through the internet application. So I have confidence in that. But I just want to say that I know perception is reality, but over time with usage and with common vernacular, that hopefully all of this technology will become demystified. The other thing to know is that technology is always changing and so we will have to be as proactive and with this leading edge technology, as you had mentioned before, to keep, keep it more, most efficient on a very transparent and ongoing basis.
Yeah. And I had, a point is that, you know, would made it eminent because we are short, I, if we were at 115 right now, I would probably be here asking you for this as, as an addition because that's just where we're headed with, with the future and, and staying up with the future and again, using what you've given us to the best of the ability we can use the things that you've given us.
That's a helpful closing piece to this, Chief. So thank you very much for the time you spent with us. Thanks for the thought that went into this. I really appreciated this conversation tonight. I think this was very good. Our motion here is to receive and file and approve this request to create a precision policing center. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island Project Bid Package Number One, Site Demolition and Masquerading Award Public Improvement Contract.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Ms. Russell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
I'll be right with you.
Too fast for you.
City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending city council award the public improvement contract for the Iowa Amphitheater on Schmidt Island Project Bid Package Number One to Eastern Iowa Excavating and Concrete of Cascade, Iowa in the amount of $819,676.45, which is 19.48% under the estimate of probable cost through adoption of the attached resolution. In accordance with the Destination Iowa Grant Agreement, the Dubuque Racing Association, or DRA, contribution of $3,658,000 is part of the local match for the overall project. The items associated with the DRA local match funds include deconstructing the current dog track and kennels to provide the location where the new amphitheater will be constructed. That's this bid package number one. In addition, the DRA will be revamping its surface parking and striping to accommodate the additional parking demand created by the new outdoor amphitheater and tourists visiting Schmidt Island. A portion of the parking lot will be incorporated into bid package number two. Three main components of the outdoor amphitheater are an open air shelter with stage that will accommodate varied audience sizes from regional events up to 2,500 people to national acts of 5,000 to 8,000 people with built-in flexibility that will open up the facility for a variety of events and destination activities. Flexible open space to utilize the amphitheater for local events and activities in addition to a concert series, with the ability to host local food trucks and experiential activities such as regional poetry events, arts and crafts festivals, sidewalk chalk competitions and so on. ADA-compliant outdoor amphitheater with ADA-compliant connecting spaces leading to the amphitheater from the areas on the island. I concur with the recommendation in respect to request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any discussion? All right, seeing none, hearing none. Exciting to see this work moving forward as well, something we've been talking about for a long time. All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number eight is Work Session Request, Update on Grant Initiatives and Grant Funding.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Wethel?
I move to receive and file and schedule the work session for November 4th at 5:30 PM.
Second. Motion by Wethel, second by Resnick. Make sure everybody, all right, Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Wethel, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Action item number nine is Work Session Request, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Retail Strategies Findings and Recommendations.
Mr. Mayor.
Jones.
Move the council schedule a work session for December 16th at 5:15 PM for the GDC Presentation on Retail Strategies.
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 10 is Dubuque Regional Airport Solar Array Ribbing Cutting Video.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that receive and file and view the video.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Sprank, second by Farber. Eric, you can roll the video, please.
This solar array is yet another great example of the progress, collaboration, and modernization that we're moving forward in this regional facility. This spring, 726 solar panels were installed at this spot. And as a result, this installation will offset 50% of the airport terminal's annual electrical usage.
This project is unique in that it's the largest behind the meter solar project on the McIlkton Valley system. We were able to work collaboratively to make some changes on the distribution system that allowed the airport to increase and maximize the size of their solar array.
Not only do we have a solar array, but we have some battery storage that's incorporated into this project. It allows the airport to use the energy when they choose to use it, not necessarily when it's produced.
The city has had a longtime community goal to reduce our greenhouse gases by 50% of our 2003 levels by 2030. The Climate Action Plan calls for increased solar on all city facilities and increased distributed energy. So this project is our gold star project.
As we all work together to build a sustainable community through projects like this, we increase our resiliency, reduce our reliance on external power grids, increase local green energy jobs, and save precious taxpayer dollars. This is truly a win for our entire region.
All right, that was a great day. It's a great project to see come together. All right, motion here is to receive and file and view that video. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber. Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Action item number 11 is Delivering Dubuque Video, Restoring Commercial Air Service.
Mr. Mayor. I motion that receive and file and also view this video.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Wethel. Go ahead, Eric. Thank you.
The priority to restore commercial air service at the Dubuque Regional Airport is in flight, but the work is not done. In this episode of Delivering Dubuque, we will discuss how the community is coming together All right, so we're sitting here today at the Dubuque Regional Airport. I'm here with Todd Dollsing, the airport director. You know, Todd, we've got a lot to talk about. I want to talk mainly about the commercial air service that we just restored here at the Dubuque Regional Airport. But before we do that, I wanted to give you a chance to tell us a little bit about the airport. There's a lot that goes on here aside from commercial air service, so give us the rundown. Yeah, so there's a lot of behind the scenes things that people don't see. We're actually the second busiest airport in Iowa when it comes to aircraft operations. And an aircraft operation is a takeoff or a landing of an aircraft. We have the University of Dubuque Flight School here that does an aviation management and flight operations program, and that makes up about half of those operations. But the other half is an extremely strong and vibrant general aviation community that's made up of our local tenants here as well as transits that fly in and do business every single day in the tri-state area. You know, you put on the different projects that we have going on. We've got millions of dollars in federal, in state projects. We've got a ongoing taxiway project, an apron project, just finishing up a solar project. We have events as well. Talking about the amount of things that are happening out here, actually, I think is a good transition to where we sit now when it comes to commercial air service. One of the things that people don't necessarily realize is that aside from one other small airport in the very southern tip of Texas, we are the only place in the United States that is a metropolitan statistical area that has to drive as far as we have had to drive in the last couple of years. To get to an airport, it's around 80 miles. So this all started right after the pandemic, basically. And I guess we can talk a little bit about some of that history, so take us back to 2022. Prior to the pandemic, we had an air carrier that had three flights a day to Chicago O'Hare. And we were literally on the verge of signing an agreement with United to start service to Denver using the SCASD grant. Of course, the pandemic hit. There were, what, 15 airports that completely lost air service? Dubuque was one of those. More than 70% of the airports seen a significant reduction in air service. So they may not have lost all their flights, but even like a Chicago O'Hare that had five flights to Washington DC maybe went down to two or three. And those airports are even still now struggling to get back to that frequency. So it really not only affected Dubuque, but it affected Iowa, it affected our nation, it affected the globe, and we still are recovering. And one of the main components is definitely, and still is, a pilot shortage. So this is gonna be something that all airports and all airlines are gonna have to work towards the future. Yeah. We were a part of the global challenges and losing that air service, but we really did fall into a very unique gap, didn't we, as an airport and as a, as a community? Because other places have a program called the Essential Air Service Program that basically makes sure that they retain that service, and it's a federal program. But Dubuque was left out of that program decades ago, and we don't have that. Community leaders really stepped up and started to come together to figure out what were we gonna do about this? The Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce had taken the lead with the, with the Air Service Task Force for years and years. In early 2023, we formed another group called the Commercial Air Service Team, and that included a number of different entities. CAST eventually became DBQ Air as an official nonprofit to really be a part of that with a mission. We all got around the same table to be able to talk about what is it we're gonna do here? And I think that experience has been a good one so far. Public, private partnerships, those are real. I mean, we go to Washington DC to advocate on behalf of the airport. We also belong to several state and national boards. Locally, we've just done a great job with getting that SCASD grant, the Small Community Air Service Development Grant. And not only that, but recently, because of all the increase in costs, we're able to plus that grant up. You know, without all those members working together, I don't think we'd be as successful as we are sitting here today. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That group that came together to be able to talk about this was really built around one very specific mission, and that was to attract and retain commercial air service here at the Dubuque Regional Airport. And, you know, there's been a number of steps along the way. We already talked a little bit about the, the federal advocacy, but we've also spent a lot of time talking to the airlines themselves. People might have the impression that we just sit and wait for the phone to ring and for the airlines to get in touch with us. That's not the way that this has worked, has it? And tell me a little bit more about that. Yeah, no, even, you know, pre-pandemic, pre-law service, you know, we were in constant communications with the air carriers. And basically, it shifted from a retain and expand to a restore, retain and expand model. Annually, we go to air service conferences. We work with our airport consultant to gather the data, to show the demand from our area, and have one-on-one meetings with each one of those carriers. This is definitely nothing new. It's, it's not something where we're just sitting around and waiting for service to happen. As I mentioned, it was always retain and expand. Now it's restore, which we've done. So now we're back to the retain and expand. We're not just gonna stop with one carrier. We're gonna keep pushing those buttons on the phone and keep making those calls. So in talking to these air carriers, and we've talked to all of them at various points in time, we finally have someone who's gonna be starting some air service here at the Dubuque Regional Airport, daily flights to O'Hare International Airport. So tell us a little bit more about this. Yeah, we're super excited to be announcing that there's gonna be a return of daily scheduled service to Chicago O'Hare on Denver Air Connection. They've been great to work with. You know, one of the main things that we really love about Denver Air is the interline agreements that they have with legacy carriers like American and United and soon Delta. You buy one ticket and then you check your bag one time and you go through security one time. And when you get to Chicago O'Hare, you actually just make it onto your next plane and connect there, and your bags will follow you and everything is seamless in that connection. That's the, the beauty of this entire situation, is our ability to be able to fly from here and then once we get to O'Hare, connect to just about anywhere in the world to be able to do that. I mean, that's just incredible. Oh, yeah, absolutely. And it really opens up the frequency, right? So before, we were married to one carrier. That alone opens up hundreds of connections into Chicago to make it back to Dubuque and hundreds of destinations once you go into Chicago to fly out of, east, west coast, et cetera. The flight that we do have right now, which, you know, our goal is multiple flights a day out of Dubuque Regional Airport to multiple destinations. We want to make sure that we have full connection to the rest of the United States. So that's the goal in the end. But we're starting with one flight. We didn't have access at this point to a morning flight, for example. We had some afternoon slots to choose from, and we chose this one because of connections. And it was the most connections that were available to us out of any of the time slots that we had. So this flight time was chosen very specifically for that reason, because you can connect in the same day to most places within the United States. You know, this is just the start. The afternoon flight is just a start. Working with our consultant, we do have an air service study. So that study tells us in our catchment area of about 30 miles-ish around Dubuque, who flies out and where do they go? We do have data to back this up and reinforce these times. A lot of these decisions have been made on all this data that we've, we've gotten. And we did a survey of the community, both a public survey and a survey of just the businesses within the region to ask them, what is it that they wanted? And it's the main reason we chose O'Hare as the main connection and why we're looking at the flight times that we are and starting in the, in the place that we're starting right now. So we've got these flights coming back. You know, how are we gonna be ready for these flights in November? As far as daily scheduled commercial air service, we are ready to go. We already handle Sun Country Destinational charters, and that's using a 737-800, which can hold up to 189 passengers, a 50-seat regional jet. We are absolutely ready to go. Our City of Dubuque employees will be working the ground just like we do for our general aviation and, and previous commercial operations. We've got the flights back. How do we keep them? What is it that we need to do as a community to make sure that we can continue to fly at the Dubuque Regional Airport? It's a simple answer. Fill those flights. And when you're booking, please try to remember all the, the conveniences. We're a short drive, we're free parking, we're friendly, we're your neighbors, your family, the staff, the TSA short lines. Get into our sterile hold area, there's gonna be food and beverages available, there's free Wi-Fi, there's charging points. We have an awesome loading bridge. You don't even have to get out in the environment. Where you're gonna board that aircraft and in a short 35 minutes, you'll be in O'Hare making your connection. All those conveniences add up to the bottom line of buying your ticket either here or out of another airport, and we need your support to make this first flight successful and add flights. Yeah, we can do this. We've done this before. We've had these flights before, and we've had air service to a major hub. We can make this work, and we can not only retain this service that we're gonna get here starting in November, but we can add to it in the years ahead. And I've seen the progress that we've made already in the last couple of years, and I'm very excited to be able to fly Dubuque again come November. So thank you very much, Todd, for being here. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, November 4th. Everybody buy your tickets.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
That was an excellent video. There is so much content for our citizens, and it really explains things. I know you had a big part in that and others who, who wrote it and planned it. That is such, I hope that's on loop for a while on our, on our public television because, you know, there's a lot of great information there and the proper attitude. Let's support each other and get this going. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. It's an important story to tell in its entirety. I, I think it gets lost sometimes in the discussion, but this is an important story to tell as we, as we try to return this, because this is, it's incredibly important and, and we can do it. I meant what I said there. Thank you. All right, well, motion here was to receive and file. Watch that video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Nexter Councilmember reports.
What reports do we have this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Sprank.
I'll be really short, because I know we've been here a while. This Saturday, I helped, a citizen got, took the initiative to do a B branch, lower B branch cleanup, because he goes there, he fishes a lot, and so I helped. We picked up seven to eight bags of trash, and that was only in about two hours between about nine to 10 people. And so he hopes to try to do this kind of as an annual event, because definitely it needs some attention, so. And then this upcoming Saturday, my neighborhood association at, so this will be Saturday,[1537.46]